No big deal. It's just the water, I'm not gonna be horrible.
Yes, sir. Go off. Mr. McNabb, twice on one day. What did you have to ask, Captain? How long for vacation? Except for he had to come back, right? How we looking, Amy?
Looks good.
Yay!
Check on mine. Yeah, slow the light.
Here we go.
This is only my second time. So... Just 'cause she's got such an early day tomorrow, I said I could do it for her.
It is a long day for elections.
Yeah. And they don't...
What's that?
And they don't need me to come back on Tuesday now, so...
Okay.
At least I can do this, help out here.
Yeah, you get to the primary, and then even more so on the presidential, it's all hands on staff, it's getting everybody that's...
Yeah. Yeah, I don't mind helping out where I can.
It is.
Okay. I think we just need to receive and file, because they usually approve their own budget.
Actually, the numbers going down.
Yeah.
Well, it's 28, make sure your mics are on, and you make sure your mics are directionally close to where you're gonna speak.
Is that the...
Oh, no, I thought you were looking at the flyer thing. I didn't know that you were...
Nobody's...
Yeah, I've been serving for seventeen years.
I didn't know you were on there. He was pointing it out on some paperwork he had.
Yeah.
Is this...
That's just, I printed out the resumes of those people.
Oh, okay, I have it on here, I was gonna say...
All right, that clock hit thirty, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone in attendance in person out in front of us, as well as those that are tuning in online. I want to start with our roll call, and Amy is gonna be holding down the fort on behalf of Katie, our clerk, so Amy, the floor is yours for roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Pax?
Here.
Cosmore?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Mulnar?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Great. Counsel in front of you, you will see this evening's agenda. Public, you should have seen a copy of said agenda, both online as well as in the back of the room. Is there a motion to approve our agenda this evening?
Motion to approve.
Motion by McNabb, sir, second.
Support.
Second from Valentine. Any discussion on this evening's agenda?
Second. Okay, sorry.
Great, Amy, can you call roll, please?
Pax?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Well, to our members of the public, this is your time for any public comments. We do have public comment at the opening, i.e. right now, as well as a public comment before we close this evening. If there's any public comment, please approach the podium and be sure to state your name and address.
Mr. McNeely, come on up.
Hello. My name is Dennis McNeely. I had a discussion with Rob Mulnar, and Police Chief, regards downspout issue where our house is kinda getting flooded. And so, Rob Mulnar asked me to come by and talk to Counselor about the ordinance that the city presently has, and what maybe could be done with it, if that summary is accurate.
And if we could get your address, just for the state of the record?
Sure, we're at 30750 Bayview Drive, right down the street.
Maybe Councilman Mulnar and Chief Tangway, since you both have been in active discussions with our resident here, maybe you can give us a little background on the discussions to date?
Yeah, absolutely. So, during my temporary fill-in to try and help bridge the gap when we didn't have the city administrator, I offered to help try to talk to the two neighbors that have a drainage issue between the two of them, and after discussing it in person with the homeowner, chief, and our ordinance officer, we discussed ways to try and resolve it between the neighbors, and ultimately with no resolution, I said the next best thing would be to come to counsel and express your concern, let them know how the current ordinance does not address what you think your issue is, and we could possibly refer communication to Planning Commission to review that ordinance to see if there was a desire to try and make amendments. Did that cover it, Chief?
Yeah, it covers it, and I've also sent some communications to the attorney about this address and about the downspouts, if you recall, and we just kinda discussed a letter that Mr. LaCourse had sent, that had what he thought would be the ordinance, and then a building code site in there too, that the attorney and I both agreed the building code wouldn't actually apply at all in this situation. The ordinance is... We're asking it to do a lot, and it may not be as clear as what Mr. McNeely thinks, and we feel this would be the best avenue to bring it here and talk about it.
That sounds great. Is there any other information for Counsel beyond the verbalization there that we should be considering? I don't have the ordinance or any of the language in front of me.
Yeah, I don't have anything, I presume Mr. McNeely may have something he wants to share, and I don't know if it's something that we want to go deeply into here, or if it's something that we want to refer to planning, but whatever your call is.
Yeah, I think it'd be great for Counsel to be educated on your thoughts and any proposed solutions or considerations, and then, to the point earlier, we want to make sure we empower the commissions, like our Planning Commission, to further review the topic if it's related to ordinance, so please, we'd love to hear from you on your thoughts.
Okay, our house sits about two feet lower than our neighbor's house. Over the years, the drainage has not been an issue too much. We had one section of a floor in our house where the joists rotted because water from the north would get into our crawl space, so I had to, you know, remove that and replace it, do all that good stuff, then to try and prevent that from happening again, I put in a French drain around the whole house.
Okay.
And that's worked well, but the French drain is designed to pick up water that sort of has seeped into the ground, it's not designed to pick up water that is flowing across the top of the ground, in a concentrated flow. And our neighbor has taken his downspouts, the one at the front, which should run east to the road, he's redirected to the west. And the downspout at the other end at the back of his house, which should run west to the canal, he's directed to the east. So he's basically got both downspouts pointing at the middle of the lots, and of course it's coming down at our property. I put up a temporary little piece of wood, nine inches high or something in that order, to try and keep the water from coming at us, but the issue is, I'd like to have a normal yard, where you can cut the grass without having to deal with this little chunk of wood, and it doesn't seem like it's an unreasonable request. Specifically, the ordinance that I was... Or the piece of the ordinance, I guess it's an ordinance section 32-118, if I can read this correctly, and part of it reads, "Each lots shall be graded to allow stormwater to drain at a predetermined slope to storm drainage collection points in such a manner as to not interfere with the drainage of abutting lots." The two downspouts pointing both literally at our house is, it would seem to me, both from a standpoint of common sense and from the standpoint of the ordinance, is not what the city has in mind when they are looking to control stormwater runoff between and among lots.
Mr. McNeely, thank you so much for the background and education. Is it your proposal this evening, just so we make sure we're taking the right directional steps, is it your proposal this evening of consider revising the zoning ordinance language to be more specific, or is it about the enforcement, do you feel? What do you see the disconnect prevailing?
My interest and my concern, if we have a weak ordinance, or one that doesn't address the situation as it should, Police Chief and Rob have both indicated that they think that the thing would just get thrown out of court, and my suggestion is, let's have it get thrown out of court, let's find out where the weaknesses are, see what the judge has to say, so that when it's rewritten, we know how it should be rewritten, rather than shooting in the dark.
Okay.
And so, my suggestion, my hope, is that we'll be able to get this taken care of, because if we do this according to HOIL, if we do not issue a ticket and have the judge speak to it, and we strictly go through the planning and so on and so on and so on, we're gonna be back here next year this time talking about it. And I'd prefer that we kinda bring some kind of a resolution to a head more quickly than that.
So your proposal then, if I heard correctly, is the enforcement would then trigger the court-level review for which would then inform the next step from there, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I mean, then you have one more opinion, and that opinion would be a guiding opinion from the court, and that seems to me to be not paramount, but certainly a pretty major component of whatever discussion you have, in terms of rewriting the ordinance.
Thank you so much for the perspective. Chief Tangway, anything to respond to on that?
The downspout at the front of the house, is that the one... So, as I looked at the latest picture I saw, it comes down the house, it's got a little drop that is pointed towards your house, but then it's dropping onto a runner that's running away from you.
It's dropping onto a runner which now takes the water...
To the back of the house.
Back to the west.
But it's still dropping on a runner right at his house, right?
Yeah, but again, it's not, the runner, the splash block, is not coming away from his house. It's going back up, and that water is then coming at our house.
Okay, I was just trying to clarify what that issue there, and then, you know, my belief in this is, it's just unfortunate, you know, neighbors, love thy neighbor, get along with thy neighbor, and you're putting us in the middle of court cases and things that we can do, but it just, it won't solve the issue, I believe it could actually throw gas on this fire, that's just my belief, but if we're instructed to write a ticket, we'll write a ticket.
Okay. As far as Councilman Mulnar, you brought this to this forum, and you've spoken with the other party, can, for the sake of an overall perspective, what is the other party's perspective on this topic that's not here tonight?
Yeah, so what I've heard was that there's history that dates back several years between the two neighbors, and I've heard it from both, from Dennis and from Steve and the neighbor to the north, and for me to try and remember what started what or which came first, I don't, but it's been things going back and forth between the two of them where they have been in disagreement, and this seems to be the latest portion of it. To Chief's point, I don't know what the next step would be, I really don't. I don't think that one thing would be a resolution, I think it's going to be an ongoing challenge.
Well, Mr. McNeely, we're big fans of getting all information available, I'm reacting to this for the first time tonight without information in front of me outside of what you presented. I think the fairest step would be for us to digest this information that you've shared, for us to meet first thing tomorrow, to review all available information we have, including ordinance language and any attorney perspectives, and then you have our commitment that we'll follow up with you within the next two days, once we've had that discussion, to let you know what we feel is the most appropriate next step.
Very good.
If that sounds like a fair, reasonable plan for you.
If there's any questions, or if you'd like further input from this side of the fence, whatever, literally, please let me know.
I really, really appreciate you for being here tonight and for the thorough and constructive conversation.
Very good, thank you.
Appreciate you. We are still in the public comment, so please, come on up, you just gotta state your name and your address for me.
My husband's a little shyer than me, I'm not. Hi, I'm Sandra Koenig, his name is McNeely, I'm father's Marine, so I kept my maiden name, because I'm very proud of my father as a Marine. I'm a retired teacher, taught, my kindergarten kids are now fifty-nine, couldn't have kids, so I'm still in touch with all my kids. I grew up with a police sergeant, Taylor, worked for the undercover cops going through college, so my dedication to the police is wonderful, but this problem has to be stopped now, and I have a way to stop it. One, two years ago, this has been more of my problem than my husband. I am a licensed psychologist, not by choice, I grew up with an eight-year-old when my brother was nine, and a dog viciously took my brother's leg completely, almost off. This violent reaction at eight-years-old has made me have panic attacks. Licensed psychologist didn't help, didn't help with him either, didn't help, but it made me learn about the way people act, and every subdivision, as a teacher, wherever you go, there's always a bully, there's always someone who's above the law, someone always trying to cause problems, well, that's what I call who next door, a bully. He knew my panic attack, when a police dog comes by me and it's not on a leash, I faint, he can't catch me. I have gone to the hospital having concussions because they can't catch me fast enough, so it's not just all the police dog coming toward me, it's the idea that I can't control my body, and I have tried. So this neighbor next door, two years ago, had his friend come over three times, this dog has run into my private property. We said nothing, we tried to hold and handle it ourselves, but the third time, the dog almost bit me. That's way beyond my control, so thank God for the chief police, we went to the police station, we filled out a police report, we did everything you're supposed to do, and they helped. They called him and said, "If you do it again, there'll be a fine, if you do it again, we'll take the dog away." Well, that definitely caused the person who's friend to have a leash on a dog, thank God that worked, but from that moment on, our life for twenty-four months has been hell. I walk home from day, and all of a sudden, all my frog decorations are gone, can't blame anyone, so I'm not gonna say, but there's a problem there. Every time, there was a wiper bent, I can't even reach the guy's next-door neighbor wiper, this truck, to take it off, but there was a police report, and it was sort of saying this girl next door screwed up my wipers. Not true, but again, we can't say who's caused this problem, but this has to stop sooner or later. So finally, my husband, he's a little younger, and I'm a little seventy, and we spent four months in a dish around our house where it comes up to my neck, to solve this problem, we bought a little house where the floor fell down completely, lowered the water, and he had to go under the ground and fix that up on himself at sixty-nine. Then he said, "We're gonna get a ditch." We're our teacher, I'm on a strict diet, I'm a strict diet without you, we're on a strict budget, and we did that around the house, we put this flood in. The problem he doesn't bring up, or the chief doesn't bring up, if you take a downspout and you put it up that's higher than you, and you bring it down, you have defeated the French drain purpose. The purpose of a French drain is to help your home, not to help someone else. Their French drain coming in, their downspout coming into ours, will cause, right, the same problem we had two years ago, it will not be able to handle that extra flood. A bigger home, big house, water flowing coming into us, it will overflow again, and we'll come right back where our floor in the bedroom will deplete, and we will lose, again, the same problem we came up, because the French drain can't take care of our property and their property too. That's where the problem is. Now, we haven't asked for a lot, but I am asking the chief whether he disagrees with it or not, I'm thinking that he needs a citation, sometimes the pocketbook does make you wake up, and I think a citation for him is saying, "Hey, you played your game far enough, it's so simple to take that downspout and put it by the water, the downspout and put it in front, you don't need it heaped toward us, we know it's a vindictiveness, we're very quiet people." And if you don't, well, I shouldn't say that, I'm talkative, but I have fifty-nine, I have students, there are fifty-nine that come in front of me who have made our life beautiful, they have good manners, good respect, they say the word "shut up," I'll smack them with love, I know that, I have raised great citizens, couldn't have kids, so my life is my kids, so when I stand up here, I vouch in front of a Bible, I'm telling the truth, and I'm asking them not just to set this aside and make it general, I'm asking the chief to give him a citation. I know he's saying that won't go any further, but I think it will, I think it will be a wake-up call to this guy to say, "Look, you've played games long enough, and if the judge says I'm wrong, fine, then we'll come back with you and say, 'I wanna be on the board,' I will run for office the next time, trust me, I will get things done, I will make sure that we're supposed to do what we're supposed to do." I'm just asking, if we can't do it, then the judge can tell us wrong, then we'll come back and we'll redo that, I will spin on the board to make sure this ordinance is corrected. I know I sound emotional, but I like that, I really care about doing the right thing. At seventy-four, I have worked hard to be a great citizen, I have done everything to make him. I actually, this neighbor for fifteen years, single, I every, and I can't cook, but boy, I try, I bring food to him every week, he has grandbabies, I buy gifts for all those three grandbabies, those grandbabies, thank God he didn't cause problems, they still come over and hug me, Miss Sandy. So my question is, I have been a good neighbor, I have gone beyond the call of duty. For him to have a dog come by three times to scare the hell out of me at my own private property has gone beyond the call of duty, and I'm so glad the police reinforce this, but at the same time, I'm now feeling that the court should reinforce this too. I'm not asking for much, I'm saying it might be wrong, it might cause more problems, but I do think he needs a citation. How simple is for you to take a downspout and put it toward the river, and put a downspout toward the front instead of aiming at us? It's real simple. Love you, sorry I talk so much, it's just who I am.
I just want to thank you for your passion and for being here to share everything that we need to hear for the background and how we got to where we are today, we want the best for our residents, including you, and we're gonna debrief, like I promised you, as a group, since we're just reacting to this for the first time, you know, Councilman Mulnar, our chief, might have more information, but we want to make sure we really dive on this one with what you've shared, and you have my personal commitment that we will follow up by Wednesday of this week, after we've met as a team, to make sure that we know what the next step is, and we'll be the first ones to share that with you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you for coming.
I really am not like this, I talk a lot more and happy more, okay?
Thank you so much.
I will be running for office, so remember me, Sandra Koenig, okay?
Well, we appreciate anybody that's...
Koenig means unique, my father was a Marine, and he used to say, "Koenigs are strong," so remember that, okay?
Thank you for your family service as well, appreciate you. Is there any other public comment this evening? If so, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Well, hello.
Hi, how are you?
Amazing, thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks, Tina Kuzma, 30495 Bayview, just a suggestion on that, that might fall in Building Department realm too.
Great call.
So...
Building Department's been out and looked at it. Sorry, thank you though. They've already been out, thank you though.
So I'm here about our beloved assessor, not that he upped our taxes, which we all saw that coming, but now I wonder if the calculations were right. So, I'm sure Rob's aware, Garrett, I'm sure you're aware, going back a few years, so this is in a new situation, and when you had talked about kinda wanting to look at our special services, and I kinda touched on that, then maybe take a deep dive on assessment, because it's not been a good experience. So a few years ago, I did a ladybird deed, which, those are pretty common as you get older, basically, upon my death, my property goes to my kids.
Okay.
And that's it, that's not a property transfer, that's nothing, everything remains the same. Well, he tried to uncap my taxes at that time, and he tried to charge me $250 for not filing a property transfer affidavit, took me three phone calls with him, and he refused to correct it, and stated that it wasn't his policy or procedure, which I enlightened him that assessment has no policy procedure, you follow law. So, then I got his supervisor's number from Cindy Lear, and we corrected it within five minutes. Now, in the past two weeks, this is, so that's just a little minor thing, and my concern, as I told him then too, was, I'm in title, I know what I'm talking about, so I know I'll win, but you're doing this to other people that don't know, and that's unacceptable to me, there's little old ladies paying $250 and whatever, but, so now we have, I divulge, I work in a title company, so I'm privy to more information that goes on within city assessments, treasures, whatever, and see more than most people would see. So, on the twentieth, I purposely emailed Katie and Brian, because I knew I had no faith in the assessor, who that's who I should have emailed, but I had no faith in him. So I emailed him about a situation, a transaction that we're trying to facilitate, and there was multiple properties that were combined, and he never, this was back in twenty-one, three years, and he never filled out the correct new legal descriptions on BSNA, which in title industry, we don't care about your address, your address means nothing to us, it doesn't even exist, we only go by legal descriptions, that's how we find, we search the property, we search liens on that. On the twentieth, I emailed that to Katie and to Brian, in which Katie promptly responded, "That's the assessor," and I told her, I said, "I know, did it for a reason." So she CC'd him on it, he never responded. So the twenty-second, I emailed back, I said, "Just following up on this," and I kept him included, "Following up on this, where are we with it? We have a transaction in process, people want to close." He never acknowledged my email, never responded. So, today, I reached out again, and I included his company. I went online and found his company's broad email, and I CC'd, didn't hear anything for hours, finally got a response, but with no signature line, I don't even know for sure who responded to me, whether it was Dave, or whether it was somebody from his company.
Okay.
And it said, waiting for, waiting for an elect... And it said, waiting for, waiting for an electronic copy of the survey, which when I emailed today, I included my two emails that I previously sent, which included the survey. And I said, the survey that I provided to you already? Are we still talking about these parcels? Still haven't heard a word from him. So this is not, and I know you're aware of the background too, but I just want to make it aware to all of council and to the city and make it presented that this, this is holding up a transaction right now. People cannot sell their property. So that not only is this, it's a commercial, but it's, if doing this also impacts personal and private property as well. So, and it's unacceptable. I had the same timeframe. I had this. I had one up in Tipton, Michigan, where a gentleman had bought two different properties. They were large. And then he did some lot splits. The same day I emailed our assessor, I emailed the assessor up there looking for the information. Where's the approval from the city? And I had everything. I had the guy's warranty, previous warranty deeds. I had his settlement statements. I had the lots where he asked for the lot split, where the affidavit of approval. I had, I had, I had like 20 pages within 15 minutes from that assessor. I still have got nothing from this assessor. Again, this was three years ago that this combination was done. So for three years, that legal description's been wrong. And now it's holding up a transaction. We can't do our job and we can't facilitate the sale.
I really, really appreciate you coming forward to share all that information. Just transparently, I was made aware of this this afternoon, late this afternoon. I immediately called the most senior person I could at that organization. And that person assured me that they were all over it, that they would dissect it and that they would follow up with the parties that were involved. So I know that that follow-up would be happening if it hasn't already happened earlier.
Right.
So I want to make sure I stay on top of this personally. Counsel, we are working very hard to embark on our professional services review. We have a grid, a matrix, and are discussing actively amongst council our plan for dissecting each one of them. Tonight, you'll see legal as an example, as an RFP for that, but we hear you loud and clear.
Good. And I knew you were aware of it, but I wanted all of council and even people, because who knows what he's done? Who knows? You know, and even my situation, like I said, with the ladybird deed, has he charged people and they've paid it? Like it's, it's unacceptable. It really is.
You know, thank you. And you know how much we want to look into the data and create the long term and a better path than we are today. And so without having all the information, because we'll embark on that journey together, thank you for this. I'd like you to please just follow up tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. I'm kind of a jerk now.
If you don't, if you don't hear anything, like I said, the senior, the senior leadership there assured me that they were all over it. They were going to work with all parties.
And that's who I think responded to me today.
Okay, so.
I don't think it was even Dave.
I will stay close to it. I'll check in first thing tomorrow morning. As far as the bigger picture, we're absolutely going to deep dive on all of our services.
And that's why I wanted to give you ammunition for when you.
I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. And thank you for just bringing your expertise to the table, right? Because not all of us are experts in all these areas. So to hear from an expert on your experience, and we're going to look at it deeply.
Okay.
You have our commitment. Thank you. To our, to our public, any other public comments this evening? If so, please step up to the podium and state your name and your address. If not, we'll have another public comment section towards the end of the meeting. Going once, going twice. All right. Well, public, we said it from day one. We want to listen, understand and set us up for the long term. And so I just really appreciate all of you for speaking up. We'll be following up with you by Wednesday. We'll be looking into the professional services and make sure we support this topic each and every step of the way. So thank you both for your commentary. With that, we'll, we'll close our public comment section if there's no further public comment and we'll jump into our consent agenda this evening. Counsel, in front of you in your packet, we'll go item by item. So item number A is going to be city council minutes, February 12th, 2024. And we'd be looking for a motion to approve the city council minutes.
Motion to approve city council minutes.
Okay.
Second.
So second, so motion by Wood and a second by Valentine. Any discussion on the council minutes? Great. Amy, can we call roll, please?
Sure. Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yes.
Item number B is going to be our planning commission minutes, January 16th, 2024. We'd be looking for a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve the commission minute, planning commission minutes.
Second.
Motion by Woods, second by Cox. Any discussion? Amy, if we can call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item C in front of you is going to be our planning commission public hearing minutes of January 16th, 2024. We'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve public hearing minutes.
Motion by Wood. Was there a second?
Second.
Second by Cox. Any discussion? Amy, can we call roll, please?
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
The last item on our consent agenda this evening is our DDA minutes of January 16th, 2024. We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Cox, second by Valentine. Any discussion? Amy, call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Counsel, thank you for item by item. I know we had some discussions on group level approval or item by item approval. So for the sake of counsel's direction previously, I'm going item by item. But if we want to revisit that anytime, we can absolutely do so. Next item is going to be our communications. I want to thank Councilwoman Cosmore for your partnership and liaison on the 33rd District Court and for Chief Tangway and all other parties involved. In front of you, we have our 33rd District Court 2024 final caseload budget. And we'd be looking for a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Motion by Molnar, second by Cosmore. Any discussion? Chief Tangway or Councilwoman Cosmore, anything you want to add to this? Great. Amy, if we can call roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Great. That brings us on to my report this evening. Counsel, I have three items for you. Before I get into this specifics, I just want to make sure that we're all aligned. I know I've included quite a bit of information in your packet. And I know we've all been purviewed to the applicants. I want to make sure, and Vince, I'm going to hand over to Vince for a part of this discussion. But we have to respect the confidentiality of the applicant pool. Basically, long story short, they have to endorse that we can publicly speak about their application out of respect for any current positions or personal circumstances. So Vince has already taken some steps there, which he'll talk to you about. But I just want to make it clear, please do not mention any names of any applicants at this time on a public level until we've had further discussions, which we'll get to. So just want to open up with that. To our members of our public, those on virtual or here in the room, as well as the council, we did reach our, our last day of the application process being opened. If you recall, that was February 13th. And we ended up with 11 applicants for our full-time city administrator hire consideration. I had Katie share those previously electronically, so everybody's been purviewed to the applicants. And really what I want to focus on this evening is where does council feel we want to go from here? Let me start off by saying, Vince, it's been an absolute breath of fresh air to have you in our office, to have you a part of the discussion. The expertise and experience you brought has been very incredibly important for us. We just appreciate you for being here in the interim window that you're servicing the city of Gibraltar. With that being said, counsel, as we're all aware, May 10th will be the last day that Vince will be here serving the city of Gibraltar at this time. So with that being said, it's important that we consider the timely next steps that we would like to take as counsel to fairly review our applications that we've received and embark on that hiring process. With that being said, I just put two suggestions in your council packet. I'm going to just highlight those suggestions for consideration this evening. And then I'm going to hand over to Vince, who's going to talk through a third option for consideration. I think the first option we might consider is to have each of you as council members independently review all 11 applicants and determine the top three to five, or whatever you may choose, that should proceed to an interview process. In doing that, council can bring your top three to five to our next council meeting. So we'd give you from this evening till that next council meeting, which is on March 12th, to have your independent review, unbiased in nature of all the applications we've received. And if you were to come with those top three to five, then we'd be able to merge and see where we are aligned as a collective council on identifying those individuals that would proceed to an interview. That's option one to consider. Option two to consider might be establish a hiring committee. If you recall, for our interim manager position, I, Vince, sitting next to us, we had designated an interim managers committee. And that was myself, Councilman McNabb and Councilwoman Wood. And what we did for the interim manager process was we independently reviewed, merged our recommendations and then brought recommendations to council. That is another option you might want to consider as option number two. And again, that could then merge onto our subsequent council meetings and interview considerations. And obviously, as council decides on what options, whether it's a committee, whether it's a council-wide review, we would want to schedule some sort of session to be able to interview whatever applicants we decide upon collectively. So those are two suggestions. Vince, I'm going to pass it to you and maybe with the confidentiality in mind, maybe you can talk to them about maybe a third option to consider as you've reviewed our application pool.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, what I'm handing out is just a, a review of the confidentiality request. You received 11 applicants, of which five had requested either in their cover letter or a subsequent email to Clerk Thomasic that, to have their application considered confidential. And the significance of it is, is that this would allow city council to discuss their application in a closed session, whether to proceed further with an interview. And just by background, for me in the past, in regard to the Michigan Opens Meetings Act, I would always put in my cover letter, I request that my application remain confidential until the point in which public disclosure is required. That point of public disclosure is when the city council helped me out is when you got to announce who was going to be interviewed. And so at that point in time, you know, a number of the applicants, I think three of them, when I called them on the phone, asked that they send an email to the clerk requesting that confidentiality. Otherwise, it can be all out in public. Six of the applicants either didn't respond or were perfectly fine talking about it. And so when I handed out to council, I listed numbers and the ones in one color are, you know, could be discussed in public and the others initially would be discussed in a, potentially in a closed session. So how that's handled with, you know, the first alternatives that the city council or with the mayor had mentioned, you know, just to keep that in mind, where that review would take place, whether it's, some of it could be, well, would have to be in public and then others would could potentially, would, well, would be in a closed session.
Thank you, Vince. And so to round that off as maybe potential option three to consider would be council could motion to enter a closed session as early as this evening. But the closed session would then be focused on discussing those that have requested confidentiality. So with that being said, three options. I would like to look for council's guidance on how we want to proceed this evening. So I want to pass it over for discussion.
Well, I definitely think that we should, all of us should be involved in this process when we're doing city administrator. I would like, option two, I would just kick that one out.
Perfect.
Because we should all be for something that high up. We all need to be involved. I think you might, I think you might be shocked. We'll probably all end up being pretty close with who we pick after reading through them. But I think it's a good idea to have us all, you know, do that and then go into a closed session and maybe talk about it a little bit and then.
So if I'm hearing from Councilwoman Cosmore, we scrap option two because that would be more exclusive to those three individuals. And we open up so that all council, as of this evening, could review all available applicants and then come with their three to five recommendations at our March 12th meeting. And at that point in time, we can make a decision on how we want to proceed with interviews. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I'm supportive of that. And based on offline conversations with Treasurer ARP and former Mayor Goris, they both recommended that process as well and it seems to be all inclusive. So I'm supportive of that as well.
I like that a lot too, because it allows us to also include department heads or the city personnel in the office as it relates to their perspectives so that we can collectively merge all the independent reviews. And then we'll have a pool that we can see alignment or lack thereof on the 12th. And then we can motion for whatever session would be required for interviews and reach out to those candidates accordingly.
I had something as the finance director. I think we need to set our salary requirements when going through them because I saw some of the rates that people were asking for, which are more than the city can afford. So I think it would be a good idea to set the salary requirements before going through the applications.
Set the salary requirements before going through the applications.
Yeah, like where we want to land as a city.
Yeah. That's great feedback, Amy.
I think we, I know you had talked earlier about changing roles and what people are doing. We really need to know exactly what we want to hire them for. So we really should figure those out first before we bring them into, you know, bring them in for interviews.
I know we've heard from this side of the table. So we have basically, option number one is seemingly where we're leaning and to Amy's caveat on salary depiction, so that would help inform selection or lack thereof. And then to Councilwoman Cosmore's point, I know there's been discussions around job responsibilities. Obviously, we posted it with a more generic job description and we have our charter-based 18 duties, but there's a broader complex equation that we've all discussed pretty candidly. I think Vince has also been a helpful resource in just understanding kind of that lens as he's entered, albeit what, it's day six now?
Yeah, six full days.
Let's hear from this side of the chambers.
Mr. Pastew, do you know any of these individuals?
Um, no, I actually don't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
When you, you say no message for two of them, what does that mean?
Did not reply. That's essentially what it is, no reply.
Councilwoman Wood or Councilwoman Cox?
I agree with Cosmore. I think that we should all be involved in this process, definitely.
Maybe one suggestion, if we're all going to be going through the, Councilman Cox, anything to add before I, okay. Maybe one suggestion is I think we're all aligned then. The next step would be to dive into those 11 applications. Perhaps, if I may suggest, since we're now going to be embarking on that journey together and give us a couple of weeks to do that, perhaps everybody can independently then think about how they view the applicants in context of the job description discussion, because that was something we had. And then Vince, I would love if council's open to it, that Vince could provide a recommendation on how he sees the operation in his time here. I think that would be a really good information set.[1635.48] I think that would be a really good information set. It's unbiased, we all independently come together with perspective on job description, Vince's third-party perspective, department head input, salary input, and applicant prioritization. We merge that on the 12th, and then we consider where we're aligned and where we're not aligned, and then where we want to schedule interviews. What do we think?
I love it. Yeah, I think that's a great perspective.
You like it?
I think it's right on, yeah.
Everybody? Chief Tangway, Bill? What do you think? I like that perspective. I think it's a nice, independent, unbiased approach that merges everything, and then the 12th will be our decision point, which is where are we aligned, where are we not aligned, which we'll focus on where we need to discuss, and then we can motion for an interview where we deem appropriate.
Agreed.
If I may just, you know, the deliberation of the applications, I think will have two pieces to it. The ones that will be, that did not submit anything requesting confidentiality or were fine with it would be one element of it, and then going into a closed session to review those that had requested confidentiality. And, you know, in advance of it, too, is that, you know, I think that at that point, you could, obviously have to, when you determine who's going to be interviewed, you have to disclose that in a public, in a public meeting, and then obviously hold the interviews in a public forum as well. But I see that structurally, the agenda for that item at the next meeting would have two elements, one in the open session, and then the other in the, in the closed session, so.
That's fantastic. And then Amy, to land your perspective, what we'd probably like from you as our finance director is to, as we follow up from today's meeting, perhaps you can send an email to council that would include what you recommend as the financial upper threshold. We can look at that in context of the applications we've received, and we can then consider that on the 12th, and then we can consider that before we reach out to any interviews.
I have it right here, if anybody wants it. I would say basically kind of what Michael's getting paid to what he would be getting. He would be getting a raise coming up, so I would say that would be my upper threshold right there. I don't know if you guys want me to say it, if you want that now, but I have it.
I would say let's follow up with the email unless, but I have no issue with it being publicly said unless council does.
Okay.
I just think that it would, I think it, I guess, I don't know. I see both sides to it. I see the transparency side, which is important, our budget's going to be transparent, but it also may give an indication to applicants as to what they should be asking for. And obviously, our intention would not be to spend the max amount if we can get the product that we want for a more reasonable number. The numbers that, that lasted administrator was getting paid were, were higher than I would be budgeting this position for, so to disclose the higher end of that budget thing, I don't, I think may potentially do us a disservice.
I agree with that sentiment, Amy, if that's okay with you.
It's just risking the potential negotiation process.
Take away some of our negotiation.
Agreed. Council, any issue with that?
I'm gonna also highlight, though, you are risking possibly losing quality candidates with that, too, because I know if, when you're looking for a job, you're kind of looking at the salary requirements, and if it's not within what you feel you are worth, then you're not even going to bother. So I'm just going to highlight that for everybody to think about as well.
I'll make sure I include like our benefit package, too. Sometimes, some people may take a little less pay if they have a little extra vacation, or you know what I mean? Sometimes we can play with that.
I think the beauty is we know what we had, and we know what we want, and we're going to collectively merge what we want, and we will make sure it's a financial equation on qualifications and what's best for the city with your guidance on upper limit considerations.
Okay.
So we'll have that as an email file, if that's okay, Amy. Council, any other discussions on that topic? Chief Tangway, anything you want to add?
I don't know if you want to add it now or later, but you and I had a discussion about at least sending a shout out to, there's a couple of city administrators really been coming through for us while we're short until Vince got here, and I don't know if you want to do that tonight or another time, but it just made me hit when you were on that topic.
Yeah, I think it's a great call. For all those that didn't have this awareness, I think we mentioned this publicly already, but Mark Kibbe, a former city administrator, has really gone above and beyond. So Mark, if you're out there listening, thank you, and thank you to those that have built such strong bridges with a gentleman like that, who has put his hand up volunteering his time amongst a broader commitment to try and help us secure funding. So I just want a special shout out there. Chief Tangway, please add any other shout outs, but that was one that I know was top of mind for me.
I've only walked over, but I heard Derek Thiel had some help with a few phone calls, too, so.
Derek has always been a great partner for us. I commend Derek for giving us some knowledge and consideration, so thank you, and a great call on both. Any other topic or discussion item for that before I move on to the next one? Great. We have a commitment that we continue to share the SHUVA report, so I just want to flash that for you in front of your council packet. You'll see that all the details, the high-level takeaways, if you recall last, last report update, and I'm doing these on a monthly basis. One of the things I want you to focus on is, as you look at the tables across the different cities or townships, the percent of system, and I'm happy to say that we're still in the single digit, so we're at 9.5% of system. Now, that is an uptick from 7.9%, but below the double-digit mark, as you think about the historical trends. I know I've mentioned this, but the simple synopsis, I attend our SHUVA board meetings and stay close to the broader discussion. The simple synopsis is, it's a combination of Mother Nature and the infrastructure, and the infrastructure sewer lining projects and everything else that's been happening, obviously, has been beneficial for the long term, so thank you to all that were a part of that historical mindset and investment, as well as Mother Nature, which obviously has been kind and/or not so kind to us. But in this case, we're still in the single-digit mark, 9.5%, 9.5% relative to 7.9% last month, and I'll keep council and the public updated each month as we get these reports. Anything to add, Bill or Vince, on this topic? Yep?
I talked to a couple of people from down at the plant today. Everybody knows that our meter is right by, or right across the street from the old McClaus deal. That's where the sewer meter is. They calibrate it or check it twice a year, and they are planning on going with a different company this year. They didn't sound so thrilled about it, but they're going through a different company. So they have no control, they don't have any parts for that if that meter goes down, so they have to call this company, so just letting you know that. So they do it twice a year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council on the SHUVA report? And again, I'll keep that monthly going. Next topic, I'm going to try and be succinct, but believe it or not, for the administration, it's, we passed our first 100-day mark, and I thought that was pretty exciting. So we are shortly past 100 days, and we set out 10 directional goals for our first 100 days, and I just want to provide a quick little flash update on each one of those. Number one was frequent and transparent communication methods to ensure all of our city personnel are informed. For all those that aren't aware, we do all-city-wide personnel weekly department head updates. They're sent out every single Monday, so thanks to Katie and Amy and all the department heads, I think it's a great way to make sure that every single person is a part of the city operations, privy to everything that's happening around you, what you should know and what's happening in each of our department lanes. We also did one-on-ones with all of our city personnel, city personnel sitting in the room even, as a means of just understanding where we need to be better for the city operation moving forward. And council, you've seen action plans coming out of that, both from a fire, police, and broader perspective. So I'm really happy on the city personnel culture and communication. Second was, we wanted to execute our contract for the DPW partners, and we got that done quickly and effectively, and just want to make sure we show our appreciation for DPW and all the work they do each and every day for the City of Gibraltar. Chief Tangway, and I, and Councilman Molnar, and others were embarking on some preliminary discussions around our police contract negotiations, so that will be coming up next. Chief Tangway, do you want to just give a little color on what call we're on today, just for transparency purposes there?
So our police department is currently with under one union, and all officers are in the same union along with dispatchers, and that is the P O L C, and that union has decided they would like to try a different union leadership, so they're going to move to P O A M. There's a vote, they're going to take a vote on that, and they would separate the unions, a command union and a patrol union. The patrol would be officers and dispatchers, and command would be sergeants and lieutenants. So that's their direction. The city has no objection to it. We support what they're doing, and it just means a couple of negotiations, but we'll get through it.
Yep, and so we, we had a call today, and as he highlighted, we expressed no objection, so that path will prevail accordingly, and we'll support that path, and then we'll enter negotiations respectively. So wanted to make sure we had updates there on the contract front. Chief Tangway, thank you, as I put you on the spot. Make applicable appointments and professional service decisions. Really proud of all the residents that have put their hands up, and to all of our commission members and all the personnel that make it possible. I think we've made some really, really strong appointments. We've established some really strong committees that will empower the entire operation with expertise, experience, and a pure interest of what's best for Gibraltar for the long term. We mentioned professional service reviews. We've been deep diving, so public might not see a lot of it, but we've been diving, and we've been diving on each of our professional service opportunities with basically grids and understanding of where we need to be looking and the prioritization of that. So data will inform our pathway, but tonight, we're going to be discussing our legal RFP for our legal services. We'll be going through sequentially all of our professional services that support City Gibraltar. We wanted to review policies and procedures and identify any gaps and areas for optimization. We've done many examples of that, a multitude. I want to thank Chief Tangway. I know Chief Kane, from a fire perspective, is working deeply on that in partnership with Chief Tangway and I, so a lot of process and procedural optimization taking place. We wanted to establish training for our newly-elected officials. We had many trainings, parliamentary procedure training on November 30th, and MML virtual newly-elected officials training on December 13th, and we're trying to incorporate our learnings as we learn. I've seen case examples of that come through in the commissions as well as council, so thank you for listening and learning and applying. We want to provide transparent information and proactive information to our residents. Residents of Gibraltar, I hope you feel it. We've done everything we possibly can to be overly and abundantly transparent with what's happening in the City of Gibraltar, and we want to post everything before it happens. We want to be an open book when you have questions. We want to give everybody in this community a voice to help us improve the long-term operation of Gibraltar. So thank you for making it a two-way street, and we hear you, and we're going to keep moving together. We wanted to find a clear strategy for addressing our needs in the city and the hot topics of our city. We've done, thanks to the hard work of many sewer lining work, two water main projects, which establishes water redundancy, improves our underground infrastructure, and enhances our city for years to come. We have our infrastructure study committee that just kicked off last week on the 22nd, which will prioritize recommendations for how we address infrastructure needs in the long term. We have our short-term rental study committee that kicked off on January 2. Now, if you recall, this administration took the action to prohibit short-term rentals in R1, and we have now established a committee that's deep diving on the topic for the future. We have public hearing held on PFAS and the treatment facility, and action was taken by Planning Commission. Thank you to Councilman Cox, who sits on that. We have RFPs for bridge inspections being worked through, that will be on our March 2024 council agenda. We have our Horse Island Bridge Steering Committee that's actively meeting and has been in touch with MDOT. Thank you to Councilwoman Wood. Water, everybody's expressed their perspective on water and the water bills in the City of Gibraltar. Vince, Amy, and many other parties, Chelsea, who's a resident and expert here in City Hall, have been working together, and we're, as we committed to you, we're going to put out a publication that clearly demonstrates to our residents how a water bill is calculated, and the why behind the water bill, where our City of Gibraltar's incurring costs, and how we get to that final bill cost for you, in addition to Bill and others who've been looking at the water operation in its totality, from Gleva to SHUVA, to how we meter, to how we calculate, to how that relates to your bill. So we'll give updates in March, you'll see that on council meetings moving forward. We have our interim manager, Vince, after our prior city administrator departed on February 2nd, which was unexpected, but we jumped on it, and within, what, 13 days, I think we had you sitting in the, in the city hall. So just really grateful for you joining. Thanks for council for the prompt action to make sure we didn't leave any bases not covered. We want to make sure we add a culture of connection and collaboration amongst our city personnel, and try and do everything we can to work together, collaborate even effectively, and do events for all the people that make Gibraltar possible. We're going to have, I would say, a continued focus on bringing our residents' voice to the table. We talked as council about a survey for our residents. That's going to be on our March agenda. We talked about getting that in action and execution by Q1, so by the end of March, I'd like to make sure we have guidance on what that path is going to look like. We have office hours, both myself and others, regularly, every single week, and we want to make sure that when residents come to this podium in front of us, that we listen, and that we address and act, and, and pull through on the concerns you've expressed. We're actively partnering with the school district to make sure that we can identify and execute opportunities to support our youth. Councilman Molnar and I were wishing the basketball team off earlier as they entered districts, but there's a lot of collaboration going on. I know Councilman Molnar was going to be putting together more thoughts around how we can best integrate the City of Gibraltar with our school district, and I know Chief Tangway and many others have very great relationships there. So there was a lot of talking, but I just, I hope the residents and I hope council and this administration feel that we're doing what we said we were set off to do, and it's been 100 days, I'm having an absolute blast with all of you. I'm so grateful for the collaboration, so grateful for everybody that makes the city possible, and I'm really excited to continue getting to work with you all. So with that being said, if there's no further comments, that will close my report. Council report. We're going to turn it over to Councilman Valentine for Recreation Commission.
Thank you, sir. First one is Saturday, March 30th, is breakfast with the Easter Bunny and the Marshmallow Drop. That's going to be at the Gil Talbot Community Center. Breakfast is going to be from 9:00 to 11:00. There's a basket and bike raffle at 11 o'clock, $5 a person, 3 and under are free. Tickets include one bike raffle ticket and one basket raffle ticket. Extra raffle tickets will be sold. Younger kids, kids egg hunt, 1 to 3 years, 11:30, Marshmallow Drop, 12:30. There'll be dancing bunnies, face painting, balloon art, food vendors, Elliot's Express, Treats to the Street. Also, the schedule for music in the park has been established. June 20th, Wisteria and Rocks. July 11th, Five Towns Down. July 25th, Full Speed Ahead. August 8th, Weekend Comeback. August 22nd, Mad Mad World Band. September 5th, Freelance. Those will be starting at 6 o'clock.
That's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Valentine and the Parks and Recreation Department, for everything that you all are doing for the City of Gibraltar in that capacity. Any questions for Councilman Valentine on the recreation?
I hope not.
Great. Councilwoman Cosmore, turn it over to you.
Okay. The first one, I guess, which we already looked at for the court, for the 33rd District Court, you guys have seen it, we already approved the letter, but I did want to mention that we did go down this year where we, what we pay every year, and I think that's thanks to Rick over there for, they got a little bit, hey, I will take you a little bit, we'll take whatever we can get, it went down about like over $1,000 a year, so hey, that's back in our pocket, you know, so. And then also, we did, I finally had an ADW meeting, which is Alliance of Downwater Watersheds, and most of the meeting was about, there's a, it was a five-year report that has to go in to Eagle every five years, and they talked a lot about that, and it's due by April 4th, and I know I had talked to this, to Michael before he left, I think we were right on track and was ready to go in, but we need to make sure that that's.
Let's take note of that.
Make sure, and I do have an email I was going to forward to, I tried to forward today to Vince, but what email do I?
If you send it to Michael, I'm still working off of Michael's.
Okay, I was wondering about that, because I'm like, huh, because I kept typing your name and it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
So we're going to.
I'll make sure you guys get that tomorrow.
And we're going to change the, Chief Tangway, I don't know if you want to speak to this at all, but we're going to change the email handle, so that, we want to make sure there's continuity in the emails that we're coming through, but we're going to change it to City Administrator as opposed to a specific name. We can consider that for other departments as well, just like we have for like Treasury or Mayor or others.
Yeah, that would, yeah, because that would help to make it.
And then on that note, if it's of any help, we have a call with Eagle representative tomorrow related to the lead service activities. We're going to ask a couple of questions, so if that's of any relevance, that we want to insert a question there, make sure we're on track, glad to forward you that invite.
Okay, for, yeah, for the report. Yeah, and I know they, I know, too, they also had mentioned that we may need to be more dry weather screenings coming up, because that's one thing that the Alliance of Downwater Watersheds does, and I recommend to everybody, if you're really interested in our watersheds and our things that go around, go to the website, there is so much information about there, about our, you know, the land that we have, our waters around here, to get involved. They're constantly, they need volunteers to, and they will train you how to take water samples, how to do, you know, do that. Matter of fact, there's one coming up on the 23rd, and you can go right online, it's virtual, so in the communities that's out there that's really, you know, interested in nature, and it'll, you can be like 16 and up, so if you want to get involved in it, there's a lot, it's really interesting, and you know, it's, and it's nice to be part of it. So yeah, go on the website, visit that, and sign up for training, because they are asking for volunteers, because they're going to need more, especially if we're going to have to start taking more samplings, you know, they're going to need more people to help with that. And if you're a rain gardener, they actually have an online classes for that, too, that's coming up. So go to them, the education, they keep, put a lot of things out for us. And also, I was going to find out, did we get our signs in yet? Did Brent drop them off?
They're up.
Yep, you already got them up?
Thank you.
Thank you, great, thank you. So we have new signs, you'll notice by the waterways if you go by the, new signs out there.
Thank you.
And there's a thing, too, that we're able to, that they have the wall panels, that's education of our water systems, and this is provided by the ADW, and they will actually bring them out here, set them up, come and pick them up, and we can have them for, you know, for a few weeks, and I thought that might be, maybe like 4th of July, might be a good time to like educate our public about how important to keep the clean waterways and storm drains and all that, so it's, but we can have that available to us at any time. That was just part of our dues, that's one of the things that they give to us for doing that. And I think that's about it for that, that meeting.
That's great, and I'm looking over at you, and I'm thinking about Councilman McNabb, too, who's integrated with Waterways and some of the other, obviously, somebody who knows the water really well around here, so maybe you two can sync up on that, just to see if there's any collaboration areas there.
Yeah.
If I might suggest.
Yeah, because you could help on the meetings, too, they can send it to you, we can.
Yeah, because I, you know, if you go back in the 70s when they used to oil the roads, I talk about the waterways back then.
Yeah.
We're looking good today.
So I think it'd be great for you two to sync up on some of those opportunities there, just given the lanes that you both are involved in, if you're open to it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And as far as the Rotary goes, there's no meeting next on March 4th, but the next meeting after that will be March 18th at 6:00 PM VFW. Anybody that wants to join the Rotary or just wants to come check it out, show up at the VFW in South Rockwood, or Rockwood. And then for Kiwanis, we have Spring Craft Show coming up, March 17th. We still have openings for vendors, and mark it on your calendar, make sure and come up and support the, support the vendors up there, we'll have Girl Scout cookies. But this is actually a big fundraiser, this is one of our bigger fundraisers for the Kiwanis, so please come and support us, because this money helps us give scholarships and help us run kids' programs. So please come out and check out the vendors or let one, if you have a friend who's a vendor, have them contact us, right on the Facebook page, we have a Kiwanis page on there. And I think that's it.
Well, thank you for a very thorough update. Any questions for Councilwoman Cosmore? Councilwoman Wood, floor is yours. Beautification and Historical Museum.
Very short report since, you know, we have to wait for the weather to change, so we'll be taking apart the winter planters and getting ready for spring, which is about 22 days, so we're excited about that. Hopefully, the weather, I don't know what's happening tomorrow with the weather, but hopefully it starts getting nice. That's it for beautification, and the museum will be open Sunday, March 3rd, from 2:00 to 4:00, and I'm not sure if FEMA will still be around at that time, so we should be okay with opening the museum?
Yeah, I was going to ask about how that was going, even if you're here informally during the day, and FEMA obviously is set up in that upstairs room, so we can take it as an action, maybe you, Chief Tangway, and I can talk to the heads of the FEMA staff that are on site, I met with them this morning, and just make sure that they're aware of what year got planned and we're aware of what they have planned and how we can work together.
Okay, because I didn't know if they were here for one week or two weeks. One week, because the gentleman in the off, the room over here thought two weeks, so, okay.
So we'll, Chief Tangway's going to give an update this evening, and then you, Chief Tangway, and I can talk tomorrow and meet with the staff as necessary to make sure that we're understanding both parties' interests.
Okay, and that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Wood? Councilman Cox, we'd love to hear about Planning Commission and DDA.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with the Planning Commission. There were a couple items on the agenda. One of them is before council right now for the lot consolidation over on Friar for those two lots. It's recommended by the Planning Commission that the council approves that, so it's set before us to handle that. We'll get to that in one second. The other item was scheduling a public hearing for the Wilkerson rezoning request, which is more or less following the master plan that was implemented in October, and hearing or listening to the requests of any variance to that ordinance that's in place. So there's a public hearing scheduled for our 319 meeting for the Planning Commission on those items. As the mayor's brought up, we did, I did discuss at the Planning Commission our parliamentary procedure training, and we're trying to get off the tabled items and put them in the right category. I should have probably explained that before I brought it up at the Planning Commission meeting, but nonetheless, everybody got the right message at the end. For the DDA, we approved the items for the 4th of July festivities, the Port of Johns Estates rentals, and we also approved the music in the park, which Councilman Valentine expressed who's going to be there for the bands. So if there's not any questions on those items, I'm going to ask for a motion based on the recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve the lot consolidation through this council.
Make that motion. Motion by Molnar, second by Valentine, any discussion? I know there's a lot of details discussed at said meeting, sounds like everybody was into it with that background.
Where the fire took place, he, the person that owned the lot adjacent, purchased the lot and to combine those two for his property.
Great, any further discussion? Amy, can we call roll?
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Great, thank you for pulling through on that, appreciate it.
That's the end of my report.
Any questions for Councilman Cox? Appreciate your service on Planning Commission DDA.
Thank you.
Councilman McNabb, talk to us about our waterways.
I have nothing to report at this time, it's getting warmer, and I will have something to report come April.
That sounds great, thank you so much. Any questions or suggestions on waterways before we move on?
Yes, one question.
Please.
Have you heard anything about the weed harvester?
No, not this, I was going to get with Vince this week and found, find out if he was able to get, take off where our last administrator left off.
It's, the funds are available, and I was told it's in the more of the procurement phase, based on the last update we got from the county. But Vince, we will make sure we touch base with Councilman McNabb on that topic and pull through accordingly.
I believe Michael and you did have the procurement pretty close.
Yeah, the last update I heard was good news on the path progression, but it's definitely time to check in on that, and we have the email contacts as well that we'll circle back with.
Yeah, there's probably not many places you can buy those, like this.
No.
I think it's also like, I'm not an expert in that area at all, but there's different models and considerations.
They take a year to build, so if we were to procure, if we were to buy this thing, it would take a year, so we'd be using the old one pretty much this whole season.
So we want to get on it, so we can have a new one.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
It's got to get started, yes.
We'll add that to the action list tomorrow to follow up on with the county.
Cool.
Thank you, Councilman McNabb. Any questions for Councilman McNabb besides that one? Councilman Molnar, floor is yours.
Thank you, I'm going to dive right into the waterways-related item, and that is, mark your calendars, for Saturday, April 20th, is the Chief Charters and Captain Jim's Walleye Tournament of the Year. So that is a big deal, we have a lot of fun, a lot of involvement, and so, yeah, Chief Charters, Captain Jim's Walleye Fishing Tournament is Saturday, April 20th. The other part of my update is, as Mayor Schumate mentioned, him and I visited Carlson High School this afternoon to see the boys' basketball team off to their district game tonight against Bedford. I don't have an update on the score, but they started at 6:00, so they should be probably wrapped up right about now, but they have, they're in their district playoffs, they have Bedford tonight, presuming they were able to beat Bedford tonight, they have a injured Woodhaven team on Wednesday, and if that goes well, we might get to face off against the winner of Monroe and Trenton on Friday night. So some good news coming up for the boys' basketball at Carlson. That's all I have to report.
You know, the band just come back, too, from Disneyland. Our band just did a, they performed it in Florida, Disneyland, so...
Fantastic.
Yeah, so we got some awesome kids at Carlson, we have a lot to be proud about.
Yeah, they had a group represent today at the Southern Wing County Chairman of Commerce, where there was 11 students, that, two teachers that went with them to the event in Allen Park today, too. So yeah, there's a lot of good things, Amy's doing a great job, Amy Conway, our superintendent, is doing a pretty phenomenal job and a lot of fun stuff going on there.
Well said.
Yeah, she's, we're like, she's really good, we're lucky to have her.
Should be proud of the next generation in our school system, for sure. Great, any questions for Councilman Molnar? Well, Vince, why don't we turn over the floor to you, you got several items on your docket this evening.
Well...
Oh, did you have any updates, I'm so sorry?
I will say that in the legal business, no news is good news, so I have no news.
Fantastic, well, that's good news.
Thank you, yes, I hope so.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilman Valentine. We're going to turn over to our interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my first day with, meeting with the mayor, you know, conversation was focused on some of the priority items to address in a short period of time, and has been discussed, a number of them are related to reviewing professional services, and so Mayor had asked me to put one together for legal services, of which I have done in the past, and so what you have is a request for proposals for, for legal services, and it's structured with a little bit of a background, what does the charter specify as the duties for the position, a little general background associated with the city, and then what's contained in there is a recommendation regarding a selection team and schedule, and, you know, I put in there, having a team that is comprised of the mayor, Clerk Thomasic, and then also Public Safety Director Tenge, that I think those two for sure, given the relationship that they are involved with, with Freedom of Information requests, to have a perspective for that. I left a couple of them, Mayor and I talked about it, to fill in the blanks for council members with that, and then put out a proposed schedule that would initiate with, if approved by council tonight, that it'd be released through Mitten or BidNet later this week, with them due a month from, on the 28th, gives any prospective firm at least a full month to look at it, and then the committee would review the proposals, select firms for interviews, hold the interviews, and then by the 22nd of April, look to potentially have a recommendation to the city council, and then ultimately, an agreement with, you know, for legal services. And then part of it is I went through the scope of services that are typically associated with that. The one thing I did put in here that's a little bit different, I did recommend that you have a monthly retainer for general legal services, hourly rates for prosecution of criminal civil misdemeanors, and as well as building zoning violations, and then certainly if there's some civil litigation that's non-insurance-related, it does happen, that that would be an hourly rate service as well, and then if the applicant specifies any other kind of type of legal service with that, so. And then the rest of it just contains a general format for how to submit the proposals to Clerk Thomasic prior to March 28th, so. Certainly open, any questions, thoughts, considerations?
I read through it, and I thought it was very thorough, and I was pretty impressed with its completeness. Yeah, very happy with, with how it was put together. Important that, on the monthly retainer part, we don't want to dissuade city personnel from reaching out in fear of budget spikes and cost spikes that are not budgeted for, so I think it's really well to have that monthly retainer in there. One question that I had, in which we could ask on interviews, post-bid interviews, would be, is there any type of hour-tracking software to give us confidence in the hours that are allocated for billing items? So that's something I think that we could ask on a post-bid interview, it doesn't necessarily need to be in the proposal, but yeah, very thorough, I was pretty impressed by reading it.
I absolutely echo that sentiment. And I think what Vince has put in front of us, I'd love any feedback on the details of that RFP if there are any, and then council would really need to focus on who they'd like to be a part of that evaluation committee, as it relates to council representation for Vince's proposal, and any other feedback on the timing, but I think we should really consider a motion to put this plan in action. Any feedback from Councilwoman Wood, or Valentine, or Cox?
No, I think it's really well-written, too.
I know Councilman Molnar has, has legal training, to say the least, and we lean on him as a resource there, so I would highly advocate for his participation in this committee. I think it also might be nice to have somebody like Councilwoman Cosmore as an example, just for prior perspective and how we've evolved in the years past, but I'm open to whatever council thinks, those are just two starting thoughts.
Yeah, well, I definitely, I'll nominate Rob, did you?
Yeah, I make a motion to Councilman Molnar.
Okay, any, any other perspective on, because we'll probably want two there unless council feels otherwise, we'll probably want two council members there.
Did I hear Councilman Valentine?
You know, I'm, I'm free to do whatever, wherever you think I could be of use.
Yeah, what do you, what do you, it's up to council, I think both Councilwoman Cosmore and Councilman Valentine would both have great perspectives to offer. Councilwoman Wood, do you have any appetite for involvement in this legal process?
I guess so. Seem to be involved in a lot of other things, so I might as well step into that, too.
I think it's up to council to consider, we need at least two spots filled.
I'd nominate Pat Valentine, if you're willing to...
Councilman Valentine gladly accepts, and then...
Yeah, because Pat, he's been here a long time, and he's got a, you know, a lot more years, so he knows a lot more of the past than, you know...
I'm going to, I'm going to try to structure a motion based on what we just came up with.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to create, am I looking to create a committee, right, based on the legal service review with Councilman Molnar and Councilman Valentine as the two councilman representatives, along with Mayor Schumate, we should have three representatives at that point, so that would be my motion, for Councilman Molnar, Councilman Valentine, and Mayor Schumate to be on this committee. For the legal service RFP.
So we have that for the selection, second by McNabb, any discussion on that item? Amy, can you call roll, please?
Okay, I'll just read back the motion first. Motion to create a committee for legal service review with Molnar, Valentine, and Schumate on the review team.
As representatives.
As representatives. And then that was made by Councilman Cox, seconded by McNabb, and then if that's right, I will call the roll.
Sounds great, thank you.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yes.
Great, thank you, council, and then is there another action required for the RFP deployment? Vince, what would you need from council to...
I'd like to make a motion to advertise for the RFP for city attorney through the avenues of Mitten and BidNet.
Second.
Mol.
Sorry, for discussion, I just want to make sure we can post in Mitten and BidNet, and not just one or the other.
Well, I think they're, it's getting to the point where they're one and the same, but certainly Mitten is widely distributed.
Okay, and BidNet's the one that I receive more.
Is it, okay?
Yeah, so, but that doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be driven, I think, now that I think about it, if I got a little sticky there with Michael had as far as the BidNet and also the Mitten, so Mitten is kind of a little more limited, though, within the small group, BidNet I think is much broader in its scope.
So if we could do the both?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amy, just want to make sure you have that motion, because we have a second on that motion and discussion prevailing, can you read that motion out for council?
Motion to advertise for RFP for city attorney on BidNet and Mitten.
Any further discussion?
One question. Before the past administrator, we talked, and Mitten had changed, I don't think they're doing Mitten anymore.
Yeah, it's kind of going more just BidNet is, they still have some language in there.
I don't know if you want to try to log into Mitten, because I don't think it'll work.
Okay. And if I may, just also, if you put it on the, you know, like the MML or something, they have a classified section that reaches out as well, so.
More the merrier.
Good. Awesome.
Do I need to amend the motion to include those, or any avenue for advertisement?
Or maybe not even put like the name, you know, a certain name, just put out forbid.
Advertise for Legal Services.
Advertise for RFP, okay.
The amendment would entail dropping the specifics on the tail of that motion.
Okay, so RFP, motion to advertise for RFP for legal services.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion? I met with Randy and made sure that Randy was aware of this legal RFP, and just appreciate you all for your continued partnership. With that being said, we'll call roll. Amy?
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Back to you, Vince.
Thank you, Mayor. Asking authorization to submit the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program with Wayne County for the Parks and Rec Senior Services Program. The amount requested is $20,000, the city has received this in the past, and I also am not sure, you know, in some ways, how things are handled, being, you know, my first meeting here, so I just requested authorization to submit the application, but equally, as discussed early, to thank Mark Kibbie and Treasurer ARP for their assistance in getting this out the door, particularly, I think, you know, Mark is just a wonderful person and believes a lot in the CDBG program and certainly the city as well, so just combination of the two, just get authorization to issue the, or submit the block grant application, as well as thanking Mr. Kibbie again for his help and assistance.
Do we have a motion for the authorization, the submission?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Cosmore, second by Wood, and let's open for discussion.
How is Mr. Kibbie involved in this?
He actually put the application together for us.
Yeah, he, he reached out when he was made aware of our prior city administrator partnership.
I got you.
Any further discussion? And then, Amy, if it's helpful, this language would be, motion to authorize the submission, and then the recommended action is in the council packet, I'm glad to pass it to you here if that's helpful. Then you can read that out loud for council to make sure that they're aligned.
Authorize the supplemental of the 2024 Wayne County CDBG application to provide funding for the senior services program and authorize the mayor to sign the application on behalf of the city.
We have that motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Amy, if you could call roll?
Molnar? Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Vince, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I'm asking city council just to adopt a resolution regarding the terms and conditions associated with my appointment as the interim city administrator. This is in lieu of what I'm used to as a formal employment agreement, which I don't think is necessary, it just kind of outlines the general terms associated with it, you know, I'll perform the duties as provided in the Code of Ordinances and other tasks, duties, and responsibilities as may reasonably assigned by the mayor and council. Clearly, I'm an exempt at-will employee, my appointment can be terminated by the mayor and council at any time with or without cause. If I, for whatever reason, need to give you notice, I'll provide you two weeks' notice, the compensation 1375 per week, and that clearly I'm not eligible for any fringe benefits, and I go on to list a number of them, including but not limited to, the only thing I have in there, one of the things I have in there is if I'm still here for Good Friday, request to be paid for that, but, but the two things that I think are pertinent is certainly item number nine, which is, so it's written to defend and indemnify me of any and all claims that may arise while serving in this capacity, is, and I say that, interestingly enough, I got notice of a case where a former administrator was named in a suit and it was dismissed in the Court of Appeals, and so it does happen unfortunately, and then my appointment would be through the close of business on Friday, May 10th, by that time I would hope that you would have a new administrator, and depending on where circumstances are, at that point I'm probably looking for some time off, and, you know, if I don't get any other consulting work, then I may, you know, be open to extending, you know, so anyways, that's the rationale for the resolution itself.
Thank you, Vince. City attorneys had a chance to read this as well.
Yes.
Do you have any concerns with this?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you so much. You would be looking for a motion to adopt this resolution?
Maybe recite it for the record, or?
No, I think it's on record, as we have it standing.
Make the motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Molnar, a second by Valentine, any discussion on this resolution? Vince, thank you for assembling it, circulating it, and I don't think there's any further discussion. Amy, can we call roll, please?
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Vince, back to you for item D.
This one is just requesting authorization to hire a part-time employee in the Public Works Department, I can't pronounce the name, but.
Zooks.
What's that?
Zooks.
Zooks, okay.
Bill, anything you want to add to this topic?
Oh, she is actually in the fire department.
Actually?
She's a go-getter, it seems like, from what I see from her stuff.
Former scout.
Good news.
Yeah. Yeah, she's a former scout, she's good, she's a sweetheart, yeah.
So we'd be looking for a motion to authorize the hire of Ellen?
I'll make a, council, you want me just to read the one written?
That'd be great.
The Council of the City of Gibraltar hereby authorize the hiring of Ellen Zooks as a part-time employee in the Public Works Department.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Second by McNabb, any discussion on this topic? Amy, do you have that motion captured?
Yeah.
Great, we'll call roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ellen, and thanks to the DPW for the successful hire. Back to you, Vince.
Yeah, next item is requesting approval of a, an agreement with Fishbeck to maintain the city's GIS system. They were initially retained as part of the stormwater and sanitary asset management grant that the city received, and I think this would be for a not-to-exceed amount of $10,000. I know recently that you approved a license agreement with Esri that's a platform that's used for this as well, and so I did ask Mr. Kane to get in contact with them, and they did provide us an hourly rate for their personnel, I would presume that most of this work is just going to be probably a technician that's going to take the data that's provided by, what's that?
And put it in there.
And put it in there, yes, exactly, and so it's, so I'm just asking for council approval of that agreement.
And I know we have information in the packet, but Vince or Bill, can you maybe just provide additional color on the importance of this in context for those that may not have the knowledge of the system? Why is this critical for the operation?
The GIS system is, if you remember, and I believe it was 2018, when they did the SOL grant and did camering through the entire city, the sewer and the stormwater, they put it all on a overlay map, so anybody can look at, well, we can look at overlay of all the water maps, all the sewer maps, all the stormwater maps, any cameras, like the lining people that have been out lately, they will camera the sewer before they fix it, then fix it, and then camera it again, all that gets uploaded to this GIS, so we have the access to look at it. If there's a problem in town, or somebody's having a problem, we can actually look to see if this problem was there, or it's something new. So they get, any, all the camera footage that we sent to our engineers to look at or to survey, get sent to Fishback, and they upload it to the system, or any of the lead and copper visual inspection forms that we do, and pictures, that all gets updated as well to it.
Okay.
Plus, the field data, I think, is critical, too, is, you know, you're involved with locating where water and sewer lines are, you can get the coordinates for that so that you're not hunting around, which, on a card or something like, used to be the case for years, I mean, you always had some older public works guys that knew where everything was, but this gives it much more precise now, so it is part of just an essential tool now for any municipality is to use this GIS system more and more.
Yeah, so in the wintertime, it's actually very useful when we have snow, I know we haven't had much this year, but the location on the computer or the tablet was, is within a foot of where it's supposed to be.
Wow.
So it'll give you, so you're not hunting all around looking for something, because a lot of the, as Vince put it, a lot of the older guys are leaving, and the younger people are coming in and they don't have a clue where it's at.
Well, thank you for the background. So council, we'd be looking for a motion to approve a one-year renewal of the professional services related to the city's GIS.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by McNabb, any further discussion on this topic? Amy, do you have that accurately captured?
Yeah.
Okay, call a roll, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
And Vince, back to you for item F.
Last item I have was pertains to the utility bill review, the city went out for proposals for this, only one was received, Troy and Banks, and their work is based on a contingent basis, but they have the ability to, you know, get the information and do some forensic analysis related to that to determine where there may be some savings, they have relationships with all of the utilities, and once we provide them all the account information that they do, they go to work, they also look at any kind of public service commission tiering systems to make sure and audit that we are in the correct tier for whatever service that we have, but also, in my short time, there's been some concern expressed about the Huron, South Huron Valley Utility Authority and our, you know, billing associated with that, but also the unmetered water flowing from Gibraltar to an adjoining district, they actually have capacity to look at that as well, and so this firm is a national firm with clients both large and small organizations, and after talking with them last week, I was comfortable enough to recommend that you move forward with this, this firm for the, this project.
Thank you, Vince, and just for the public, 20% of all refunds and our credits they find on behalf of the city, and that only occurs once the city has received the refund or credit, so therefore enacted the gap that has been addressed. So we'd be looking for a motion to accept the bid from Troy and Banks to conduct the review of our utility and service bills?
Motion to accept the bid from Troy and Banks.
Second.
Second by Cosmore, any further discussion on this topic, council?
If approved, do we know when they could, that we'll start doing this audit?
They have a form, I think I put the first part, there's a second one where we start providing them the account information that they need to secure, because they'll go right to whether it's DTE or consumers or whatever utility that is involved, they'll, they'll get, be able to get the access to that and start looking at it as soon as we provide it.
Great. Any further discussion? Amy, can we call roll, please?
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thank you, Vince, for a thorough report, any further comments for council or the public?
We don't have any items listed for Clerk Tomasic unless Amy, representing on her behalf, has anything to add.
No, she is very busy with election.
Yes.
I'll vote tomorrow.
Yes.
Clerk Tomasic, thank you so much for all the work you've done to accommodate the early election, and all of those that volunteered and participated to make that happen for Gibraltar, appreciate it a lot. Treasurer ARP, I don't believe we have any updates from Treasurer ARP this evening, so we'll turn over to our finance director. Amy, Amy, the floor is yours.
My first, my first item is to approve the Bills of Reference Number 16.
Be looking for a motion to approve the Bills of Reference Number 16, council on your packet?
I'll make a motion to approve the Bills of Reference Number 16.
Second.
Motion by Cosmore, second by Wood, any discussion?
I have two, should be pretty easy questions, one is BECA management, which one, what is BECA management?
They paid a water bill on accident, and we are refunding them the money.
Got it, and if we, when we, where we wrote a check to the city of Gibraltar?
That is for our water bills and a tax bill.
Ah, very good, from the, from the general fund?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Great, any further discussion? Well, then, Amy, we'll let you call roll.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
And Amy, back to you.
So we need to do a new amendment to Gibraltar Pension Plan and Trust, this needs to be approved by council, this would be our third amendment, we need to fix our Board of Trustees makeup, unfortunately, we no longer have two workers that are currently in the pension for this particular pension, so we need to make it so that we can get another member on the board, and we would like to make it so that it is appointed by the Teamsters, the Teamsters Union to appoint the other member. Did I cover that right, Bill, you were there, too, so, okay.
No objection.
Yep, no objection on my part. So, Amy, just for council, you'd like the motion to adjust the Board of Trustees to accommodate the said changes captured today?
Um.
Any specifics on that?
I'd like a motion to approve the third amendment to the City of Gibraltar Pension Plan and Trust.
Perfect. Motion to approve the third amendment would be up to council.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Molnar for the third amendment adoption to the City of Gibraltar Pension Plan and Trust, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cosmore, any discussion on this item? Great, Amy, can you call roll?
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Great, Amy, back to you.
And then, finally, we have a payout for Michael Landis, this is for his unused sick time, we have done this in the past for Derek Thiel and Tim McLean, and I just wanted to have eyes on it and get approval before we ran the payroll.
Thank you for bringing it in front of council.
What is the total of payout to Michael Landis?
The total payout is five, oh, gross check, $7,537.45.
And Katie, or Amy, based on the file we're looking at, this is based on the 165 hours of time that was on hand?
165 hours of sick time.
Okay.
And like I said, there was a, there's a precedence, we have paid them out in the past.
So council, Amy would be looking for a motion to approve the payouts of unused time for Mr. Landis.
I'll make a motion to approve the payout for Michael Landis for unused sick time.
There's a motion by Cosmore, is there a second? Not hearing a second, Amy.
Okay, is there any discussion that you guys want to talk to me about it, I mean?
Yeah, let's open up for discussion.
This is something that we've always done in the past.
Is this like for sick time he didn't take, and leave he didn't take, and things like that?
Just for sick time.
And it's $7,537.
Yep, yep, he didn't have any vacation time because of when he put in his notice, so there was no vacation.
I'll second it.
So, so discussions open out, is, are we contractually obligated for this sick time payout?
I'm not aware of that.
You're asking me, Rob?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I haven't been consulted about any of this, so it's the first I'm hearing of it.
Okay.
So I can only say that if the man, is this includes part of the last segment of the time he worked, or is this just all after the time he worked?
This is all after the time he worked, all sick time.
Well, I don't know, but, you know, if we have the documents submitted to us, I'd be happy to check it out and give an opinion by the next meeting.
I guess, for my part, I'd rather see, check, check the employment contract and see if it was a contractually obligated, if it's not contractually obligated, I don't see why we would be, be doing that, but if it's contractually obligated, then, then yes.
Okay, so then a motion, it would be up to council's discretion, a motion would be in order then to have a legal guidance received on this topic?
Why don't we vote on the original motion, and if they vote no, they vote no, and we'll see if it passes.
Okay.
Well, but if it's, but if it's in its contract, you have to.
I think I can find out in the next two, two minutes here, and we can pull, pull this up, so it's not to delay, but I don't think we need to ask for another opinion, we've had legal review, this contract multiple times, multi, yeah.
While Councilman Molnar is looking into the contract electronically, I'm glad to pull it up on my phone as well, maybe you can give a perspective as we sit here on the table?
So we can take like a five-minute break, or a couple of minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Can we do a break, five-minute break?
Recession, five-minute recess.
While you guys look that up.
Yeah, we could, if that's appropriate, any objection to the five-minute recess while we verify that information? Is there a motion for a five-minute recess, do we need to make that?
I'm making a motion.
A motion for a five-minute recess, second by Molnar, which will allow us time to A motion for a five-minute recess, second by Mulnar, which will allow us time to verify this contractual information. So we'll be back in five minutes. That will be at 17 past the hour. Feel free to get a bio break or stand up and stretch before we get back to business. Thank you all. We'll need a discussion, so we'll need a roll call to get that motion in order.
Okay. Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. We'll see you at 17 after.
Oops, sorry.
That contract's been reviewed quite a few times, but it should be previous reviews that were done. I don't think it was provided in this package today. It wouldn't have been sent to me anyway. It would have been sent to Randy or Perry.
We'll, we'll pull it up right now.
Why would we have agreed? I mean...
It wasn't brought up.
I... Yeah, but if it's... Trying to find it right now. I don't know why I can't find this darn thing.
I think it's mostly based on precedent. We've always, always done it.
Yeah, in which, in which that case, I, I would not be in favor of it. But if it's in the contract, I, I would say we ought to live up to our end of the agreement.
I worked out my legs today, so I had to stand up. I was really surprised. I was very...
I think we can take rest reasons without a doubt. Hold on there.
Oh, God.
Cindy and Mary? Mary, Mary. They got married. You know what I just remembered, Amy? I had to cook something for tomorrow, and I forgot about it. I might go home and do some baking. I had to be there like at 6:30 or something.
Oh, yeah, for election, yeah, you have to be there really early.
Yeah. It's really early.
That's why she had me do this.
Polls open at seven.
I don't know the rules as well as she does, so I apologize.
Hi.
Hi there.
For cleanup day? Oh, they, well, they do have, we do have it come in like two or three times. We do, yeah. They usually will announce it here, and she usually puts it on there. It's usually like, right, when you first go to the website, she'll usually put it, because I know like cleanup days coming up in May, right?
Yeah, I think it's usually...
And then she's like October.
And fall cleanup, so I guess it's here.
Yeah, because, yeah, we do that on Mac, yeah, for a couple occasions. Yeah, you know what, too? If you go on the website for the DAW, or you can go directly to the website...
Yeah, that was just the opinion. It didn't have the...
I think the bottom one...
On our website, it's got under Stormgory in there. It's got the website...
The second document of the scan, I believe, had the final executive agreement. That's what the attorney had at least.
Got you, all right, I'm open.
You can go directly to the website, too, because there's a lot of information on it.
Oh, boy, that sounds good.
Got you.
Got it?
Yes.
All right, a lot of respect for the timeline. I know we're still actively looking, but I'd like to call a motion to call the meeting back in order, if there's a motion still in place.
Motion to call the meeting back in order.
Second.
All right, a motion is second, and Amy, could you call roll, please?
Okay, we're hanging on. Wood and McNabb, motion second, okay. Sorry. Okay, Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Thank you, Vince, for a thorough report. Any further comments for counsel of the public?
We don't have any items listed for Clerk Tomasic unless Amy, representing on her behalf, has anything to add.
No, she is very busy with election.
Yes.
I'll vote tomorrow.
Yes.
Clerk Tomasic, thank you so much for all the work you've done to accommodate the early election and all of those that volunteered and participated to make that happen for Gibraltar. I appreciate it a lot. Treasure ARP, I don't believe we have any updates from Treasure ARP this evening. So we'll turn over to our finance director. Amy, Amy, the floor is yours.
My first, my first item is to approve the Bills of Reference number 16.
Be looking for a motion to approve the Bills Reference number 16, counsel in your packet?
I'll make a motion to approve the Bills Reference number 16. Second.
Motion by Cosmore, second by Wood. Any discussion on payroll?
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Great, our meeting is back in order. Thank you for the time in the recess. We were able to locate some of the background documentation. Right now, we're in a discussion with a motion that has been seconded. So we're in the discussion. The question at hand is, what is the employment agreement or contract state related to the payout of accumulated sick time? So I know we're in that discussion. I know Councilman Mulnar is actively looking at said information.
Yeah, and what I'm seeing here is that there's not an executed version. There's mayor's proposal and employees' proposal, and I don't see, I see, I only see articles, benefits to be the same as DPW CBA articles 19, 22, 23, 24.1, 24.2, 25.1, 25.2, 25.3, and 26 only. What's in said articles, we, we don't, we don't have a copy. We'd have to look at that collective bargaining agreement to know if those apply to sick days or not.
I guess under Robert's Rules of Order, we can't table things, but is there a way that we can bring, have, get this to the city attorney and stuff like that so that we can have a more informed decision? Next, next council meeting?
Yeah, I, I think we can table it. I, I think that that's just something they dissuaded us from at the, at the MML. They recommended that instead of tabling, we go to unfinished business so, in order for it to stay on.
Or postpone it.
Postpone it, or postpone it. But, and I, I think we can do this review internally. It's, it's, it's just a matter of, of, you know, looking at the signed agreement and seeing if, if it requires this or not, or not. I don't think it's necessarily legal. It's just a matter of fact.
Can a motion be made that if, if it's found in the contract that this is due, then we, then it's already in place to act on it? If it's not, then we're not contractually obligated for the payment at that point. It goes, well, this is a question to us. Can a motion be phrased that way?
Based on motion conditionally, yes.
Would we have to redo the motion that we've already made, then, or...
Yeah, there's a...
Well, we vote on the motion that's already at hand, and then that doesn't, right, and then, and then make a new motion based on these conditions, correct?
Right, great. So I think this is a good discussion, and it sounds like from the recommendation, this is beyond the scope of a motion amendment. So at that point in time, since we have an active motion and a second, we're going to go ahead and vote on that motion. If counsel so chooses to make another motion following that vote, we can do so. Is that what I'm hearing?
Last vote is to vote yes, that we're going to give them the money?
This is a current motion that is seconded for yes on the money, without any contingency or conditions. So, Amy, if you can call roll on that first motion, but if you do that before you call roll, can you please read that motion that's currently on the floor?
Motion to pay out Michael Landis' unused sick time, motion by Cosmore, seconded by Valentine.
So that is the motion, separate from the discussion we just had around any conditions. And there's another discussion, Ed? Yes, please.
We have done this for a long time. It has precedence.
Yeah, I have one, one comment. I'm not sure what article it is that Mr. Mulnar wrote out, but that is actually in collective bargaining. The sick time is a buyout at your, end of your term.
So accrued sick time is paid out based on the collective bargaining agreement?
Up to a certain amount.
Is he part of the collective bargaining?
I don't know which number it is relating to it, but it could be one of those.
So we didn't have the signed copy. We have two different versions, and that's why I said we just need to refer, reference the signed copy.
Yeah, I think, I think a new motion would put all these things in the right category to...
She'd have to withdraw her motion, right?
Yeah.
It's either a withdrawal, or we vote, we vote on that motion and then create a new one.
I think we can vote on it and then create a new one.
That's what we were starting to do.
Yeah, so we're, we're at the discussion right now, and it's my impression that we have to vote on this current motion that's seconded.
I think you could, you know, the introducers could probably do a motion to withdraw and, and come back at the, with another motion to bring this item back at the next meeting.
If you vote on a motion, you're stuck with that.
Correct.
Right? One of the people that would voted in favor of it would have to reverse themselves and, and reverse engineer the whole motion, basically.
That's my understanding, yeah.
So you're better off withdrawing it than voting on it and letting it go to, and then try to re, redo it afterwards.
Thank you for the clarity.
Then I'll withdraw the motion.
So with the motion that was on the table and second, Councilman Cosmore is going to, Councilwoman Cosmore is going to withdraw that motion?
Okay.
You need to second.
I second that.
We second that. So the, the current motion that has been made and the second is to withdraw the previously mentioned motion. And is there any further discussion before we take roll on that, withdraw?
Oh, we take roll on withdrawals?
Yep. Amy, can you...
Roll on withdrawals?
Do we need to take roll on withdrawals?
I believe we do.
I believe we do.
Okay.
So, Amy, if you could call roll, please?
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Great. And for all those, part of that discussion, apologies for the complexity of that, but we've landed with a withdrawn motion. Want to make sure we're procedurally accurate. So now it's up to counsel to make any other motions they may choose.
I'm going to try this, okay? I'd like to make a motion to review the contractor administrator's contract based on collective bargaining agreement associated with the accrued sick time after review to, if it's within the contract, then it's authorized to pay this. If it isn't in the contract, then the city is not obligated contractually to owe this money. So that's my motion.
And let's make sure we get this captured, and we'll have you clean it up if we need to via Amy, so Amy...
I'll ask you to try to repeat it.
Okay, I don't even know if I got it correct. Motion to review contract of city administrator based on collective bargaining. If in contract to pay unused sick time, then we can pay it. If not, don't pay it.
That's my motion.
Is that basically the gist of it?
It was just sick days.
So that's the motion that's on the table. So a conditional, if it's in the agreement, pay it. If it's not in the agreement, don't pay it, is the current motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Can I interject something?
Yeah, please.
Before you take the second, is there any urgency that this has to be paid out by a certain timeframe?
I would say so. It's always been done right away. It's, this is actually the first time it's been brought to counsel. It's usually...
So if there's no deadline, or there's nothing in writing that says it has to be paid out within a certain number of days, why not just send this back, do a thorough study, and then bring it up to the next meeting in two weeks?
Yeah.
That would seem to be the...
I mean, I think you could wait for $7,000.
Isn't the, but just out of a thought process, you're raising a thought process. Isn't that, isn't that exactly what the thought process does? It's a more efficient way of basically determining the outcome conditionally, and then that way we're not revisiting it? We're just taking action based on the outcome?
That's fine, if that's where you want to do it.
That's my...
He's going to make the determination that the language is, that it matches. Who's going to say that, yes, this is what it says or it doesn't say? Somebody's going to have to look at the language and say, yes, this is 100% on point, or is it 50% on point, or, or what? You know, somebody has to make the review and determination. Who's going to make, make that, given this motion?
Well, I think Vince and the resources we have, as well as just, with all due respect, city attorney, well, we've had this, we've, we've compensated our city attorney numerous times related to this contract, so we can have the discussion offline.
I'm sure, I know you have.
So we can, we can have the discussion offline, I think, to understand how we get to the outcome of getting clarification for the new administration on what the contract terms are, which, to me, should have been thoroughly covered to date with all of the legal consultation and processes prevailed, in my opinion. So the motion is on the table, and there is a second. Any further discussion on this topic?
Well, I'm just...
Seconded. Is that seconded?
It was seconded by McNabb.
Yes, it was.
But if we've always, I guess it's, my thought is that this is the process we've always done, I'll sub, or just do it one because it's Michael. Is that, that why, or? I mean, it's always been done until this point.
I can, I can tell you what my, my thoughts are. We weren't a part of Michael's contract. All we're trying to do is be good stewards to the citizens of Gibraltar, that if we're not contractually obligated, then I don't think we just write a check on behalf of that. If we are, then we are, and we pay it. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
And that's reasonable.
I think that's a reasonable steward of our dollars as a city, and if Councilwoman Cosmore, or Wood, or Valentine, a part of this prior contract, have anything else to add, then we'd love to hear it, as somebody who wasn't involved in that prior process. Okay, great. So we have a motion, we have a second. Amy, if you could, please call roll.
Cox? I think that's a reasonable steward of our dollars as a city. And if Councilwoman Cosmore or Wood or Valentine are part of this prior contract, have anything else to add, then we'd love to hear it as somebody who wasn't involved in that prior process. Okay, great. So we have a motion. We have a second. Amy, if you could, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is carried. So it'll be up to Vince. We can connect on that tomorrow and poll in any other applicable parties. And we'd love to commune with our city attorney to understand how that relates to prior work done on this contract to arrive at a decision that will relate to that motion. Thank you. Anything else for Amy this evening?
No.
Great. Chief Tangway, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the Police Department report for February 1st to February 20th. You can see we're awful busy with 239 calls for service, 72 police reports, 27 tickets, eight Adala arrests, and one juvenile arrest, Forest Row Resource Officer investigations, and five Detective Bureau follow-up investigations. For the month of February, we want to wish the following birthdays, we won't do the dates, but Officer Seifert and Dispatcher Anderson, Dispatcher Merk here, Dispatcher Littkey, and Dispatcher Shelkey. Sh- sh- how do I say Shelkey? Sh- Jake. We had some training you'll see in front of you, and everything else in the report is still comparisons with January. We'll add comparisons with February when we get through the month. I have three action items tonight, and I'll walk my way through those. Action item number one is a DCC payment for sync funding. Before council tonight is an invoice for seven, invoice number 7494 from DCC. Quick explanation of that, as you can see, we normally would pay this out of sync funds that are captured from the court through probation. Those funds are continuing to go down. No fault of us, just less people are being sentenced to probation. Amy and I are gonna have to really watch this to see how this forecast out. But I've also included with that report, you can see, our $832 doesn't compare to what a lot of the other cities had to pay. I see upwards around 28,000 some of the cities were due. This fund account is for expenses incurred from October to December 31st. I'm looking for a motion to pay $832.51.
Great. Chief Tangway, thanks for the background. Council motion would be in order to approve that payment.
Motion to approve the payment.
Second.
Motion by Valentine, second by Cosmore. Any further discussion on the topic? Amy, do you have the motion captured?
Yep.
All right, great. If you could call roll.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Back to you, Chief Tangway.
Moving on to the next action item would be a recommendation to pay a bill of $720 divided amongst police operations, fire operations, and city operations. That is for our ID card company. They recently have announced they're moving to a cloud-based subscription, which are new annually for $60. We've also have to purchase some new cards. The new cards will include door access in them, which is new to us. This should cover the city with this company for probably five to 10 years, if not longer, with ID cards. We do have a lot of employees that we found that don't have ID cards, and I really think it's important to get them, including the city assessor tells me he goes door to door and has nothing that says he's related to the city of Gibraltar. So I think this is, this company is very cost efficient, very fast at getting the cards back to us. Moving forward with, currently, we pay $3.50 a card. Now we'll pay $11 with door access. The only other option would be, there are a couple other companies like this, very similar pricing, or we would have to buy our own printer and cards, which is upwards around $60,000. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the payment of $720. I spoke with Amy and those are the accounts listed there. Police operations, fire operations, and I believe that's city operations, Amy. 757?
Yes, correct.
I'm gonna make the motion to pay Bearis Fed and Company this, the money that the the $720, sorry.
Cost of the invoice of 720.
I'll second that.
Second by McNabb. Motion was by Valentine originally.
Yep.
Great. Any discussion further on that? Amy, can you call roll, please?
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. I have an action item a little late to the table for most of us here, but I called most of you to explain. Last week or week prior, FEMA on 213 and 216 reached out to us about coming to Gibraltar and setting up a Downriver Recovery Center. The mayor and I drove him around on the first day, showed him some site options. Then they came back on the 16th to look again here in City Hall. And then over the weekend, we've had some contracts come through from them. Sent those contracts to City Attorney Pintiak over the weekend. We went back and forth a couple times and then got notification that they wanted to come here Saturday and open up their operations for this week. So the item here is just to basically now probably approve the contract that's here and let them in our building, which that we discussed we would do. And it's been great. I think they had 25 residents they helped today, in-person residents. And their hours of operation are gonna be from 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM, Monday through Saturday. And, you know, there was some miscommunication on the websites. They are here for residents that also have insurance, so they're not just for uninsured residents. So if you have insurance, they're, they can help you cover the gaps between what you actually was covered and what wasn't. So that's something I think needs to get out there, because people think, well, I had insurance, I just won't get, I won't be covered. So they're working out of our second floor. They also have the Small Business Association here that's working out of our first floor, and that's helping process and sign people up for business loans and loans to cover if FEMA can't help them. So I'm looking for a motion to just approve this contract and let them in our building. If not, I don't want to evet the federal government, so I'll need some help.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mulner, motion originally by Councilwoman Cosmore. Discussion, Chief Tangway, thanks for the partnership on this and making it happen for the residents.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you were more than welcoming to them every time they were here, and I think it's a benefit to our residents to have them here. They're going to be here for one week, is my understanding, unless they, their flow is so much. So they're gonna kind of look at what they have. They have targeted to go down somewhere south of here with these revolving centers. They also have a permanent center that'll be operational for, I believe, 60 days, and that's at the Taylor Wayne County Community College. And that one's up permanent. That one will not move, but these roving ones will move. So they could go and come back if they want.
And thank you for the clarification on insured versus uninsured. It was important. I know there was some resident dialogue on the topic, so great clarification. And they're here to help for anybody that wants to show up and see and meet with them here in City of Hall, Gibraltar.
Yep. I think the fact that you guys got them here in Gibraltar is a huge service for our residents that don't, you know, think to travel too far out. What a convenience. Pretty awesome.
Grateful for it. Great. Any further discussion? Amy, if you could call roll?
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Moving on, I have another action item to approve a letter of understanding between the police union to allow lateral pay for police applicants in the dispatcher ranks. Little history here, in March of 2022, we approved a lateral pay for police officers, and I feel that we left the language out to include dispatchers. Currently are not hiring the dispatcher, but if the opportunity came and one was trained, I think it would be a great opportunity to bring them in at the level of one-year dispatcher, which is the only step up. Dispatcher training requires three steps. Level one, it costs the city about $950 to $1,200 for the class. Level two is a more expensive class, would be about $2,400. And then level three is continuous education. And if we had the opportunity to bring somebody in and pay them a little more, I think it would be a benefit. And I have the police union's support on this.
Thank you, Chief Tangway. Is there a motion to approve the letter of understanding?
Motion to approve the letter of understanding.
Motion by Councilwoman Wood and second by Councilman Valentine. Any further discussion on this?
Does this put us to an obligation to hire a step up, or just gives us the opportunity?
Gives us the opportunity if they meet the qualifications.
Great, thank you.
So those are it for my action items.
Chief Tangway, sorry.
Kevin, call roll.
Oh, sorry.
Any further discussion on that topic?
No, we didn't vote yet.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Now back to you, Chief Tangway.
Sorry. So that's it for my action items. I do have an announcement to make. The mayor and I were supposed to attend a DTE meeting this morning at 10 o'clock about the stats coming down. People have probably heard that the stats are coming down Friday at 7:00. That has been pushed back. We have another meeting scheduled for this Wednesday. I just got an email as we sat here tonight that they are definitely pushed back. They will not be this Friday. They have not announced a new date. There's a lot of players involved in this. So we'll just wait until we get it, and as soon as we know, we'll put something out on those dates. And then my last item would be, come out Saturday at 11:00 and watch the Unified Basketball Team versus First Responders, and Councilman Mulner and Mayor Schumate are gonna participate, I believe. And then it'll be a great event at Carlson High School. And come out, watch us try to play some basketball.
Well, we warmed up today.
Facts. Thank you, Chief Tangway, for all the great work and you and your department. Any questions for Chief Tangway before we close his report? Great. Fire Chief Kane, floor's yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a couple things for you. First of all, the fire activity from 2/8, from 2/22 is we had 26 calls for service, 25 were rescues. One was a fire, one was an aid to Rockwood. There were no mutual aids and no auto aids. We have continued, a lot of you seen the trucks out Thursdays as we train, but with the lights all on, we're still certifying our firefighters for pop rock pump operators. That is roughly a 16-week class. So when everybody gets out of that, they'll be certified. The new officers are still getting familiar with their positions out there. Sergeant Heather Jones did a supplement for our year-end report that I've attached. It's a little more colorful than my black and white one. We'll be doing those monthly. She has took it upon herself and wants to do them monthly, so I'll be submitting them as well. Then I have an action item, but it's including our required ladder testing. So that concludes my report for that. And as you see in your packet, we have to check our ladders. Every ladder the fire department has include the aerial ladder. This year, unfortunately, it's a little more because it's a five-year test that's done on the ladder. So the price comes out to $25.82-80. They just get this on the, on their schedule. This won't be done until August, but they get all the fire departments in the Downriver area on a schedule, so they know where they have to go and what they need to do. What they do is they come out, if you're not familiar with it, they'll put a ladder between two sawhorses and put a designated weight hanging from it and see if it bends or bows because of the heat and anything that has happened with, during a fire scene. They'll put new tags on the end to say if the ladder was heat stressed. And then they will give us a report of everyone that's done, or tell me which ones have to come out of service. So I'd be looking for an approval to get this done. So like I said, a yearly expense of the operations fund.
So a motion is being requested by Chief Kane to approve the amount of $25.82-80 related to the required ladder testing.
How many ladders?
Twelve? There's three, there's four on each truck. There's two on the, in the back as a spare. And then there's two on the utility truck. Trying to remember. Four. Yeah, there's four on the ladder, and then the big ladder. That one gets included, the 75-foot aerial.
So the fixed ladder, the boom ladder?
Yep. That one, you'll see them do it. They'll sit out here on a pad. They'll put 500 pounds on the end of it at a certain degree, and then wait for an hour to see if it drops.
Do they do the DOT at the same time, or does DOT handle that?
No, the DOT is done through a Downriver bus. They do the DOT on the vehicles.
They don't adjust the ladders during the DOT?
Nope. The DOT is all the truck. Just like for the boom truck, for the DPW, the DOT will do the truck part of it. And we have to send it to an aerial place to do the boom.
Yeah, I know we go through these on our booms, and it's not, not inexpensive, and it is required to do on a regular basis.
The unfortunate part is it's expensive this year because of the five-year.
Yeah.
So next year it'll be $1,000, something like that.
Is this budgeted? It says yearly expense. Does that mean?
Yes, we do it yearly. It's in operations.
Okay, so it is budgeted?
Yeah, it would be in next year's budget, so.
Motion to pay the $25.82-80 for ladder testing.
Second.
Okay, who was that? Mulner or Cosmore? I heard a bunch of seconds all at once. McNabb.
McNabb's taken it. All right. We got a motion by Valentine, second by McNabb. Any further discussion? Great. Katie, or sorry, Katie. Amy, can you please call roll?
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Thank you, Chief Kane. Back to you.
And the last two things are the report, it's a January report in addition to the 2023 annual report. I just put them in there for your viewing.
I'd just like to say that I think Sergeant Heather Jones did an excellent job.
Yeah, I commend Heather. Sent her a note today, but thank Heather for putting that together and Chief Kane for supporting her in that endeavor. Any further questions or comments for Chief Kane? Great. That will close Chief Kane's report, and we're gonna turn it over to Parks and Recreation Director Gores.
As Rick and Pat mentioned, DDA approved all 4th of July and Music in the Park and Movie in the Park last week. This year's 4th of July celebration is 60 years. July 3rd will be from 10 to, 6 to 10. That includes bands, beer tent, and carnival. On the 4th of July, it'll be everything, the parade, the awards, the bingo, craft show, bands, carnival, beer tent, and fireworks. And on the 5th, the carnival will be there from 12 till 10. And also this Sunday, there'll be a craft show at the Gibraltar Community Center from 11 till 4. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Parks and Recreation Director Gores and Chief Tangway and Chief Kane for, in advance, all the support you and your teams will provide related to 4th of July, because I know that's a busy, busy weekend for the city of Gibraltar. So thank you very much. Any questions for Parks and Recreation Director Gores? Great. Unfinished business. I don't know if there's any comments on sewer lining project. I know we provided an update earlier around some of the sewer lining work, but Vince or Bill, anything you'd like to add to sewer lining projects in Gibraltar?
Last week, last week we met with a resident on Bayview to just inform her what's gonna happen. That's the last segment that needs to be fixed. The lining people wanted to do something special and dig up on the edge of the road, put a clean out there, block the water that's coming in, and then line the sewer and then unplug it. But we still have the infiltration coming through, so we're not really fixing the problem. So we had met with the homeowner to discuss a couple items on how to fix two problems at the same time, because we're fighting, we're trying to fight the infiltration coming through into the sewers, and we're trying to get the sewer line lined. So if we fix the one problem, we end up fixing the second problem as well. So the contractor had, wanted to come out right away and get this done, and we sort of stopped it so we could fix the problem first before we did a lot of unneeded digging in the front yard of the resident's house. So we're still waiting back from the lining people, I believe.
Yeah, I think I'll talk with Mr. Kane tomorrow. I'm not sure that that's gonna be a very good alternative for mobilizing for one property. Usually when they do it, they're, they're knocking out dozens. So we'll get back with the property. A very, very reasonable person, too, and Bill offered, I thought, a really, really good alternative. As long as I'm not resetting the bricks on the pavement, so.
Thank you both for the update. And that would conclude our unfinished business update. No new business this evening unless council has anything new to add to the docket?
No, but I did have one question for unfinished business.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. The recycling, did we find out anything about that?
You want us to take it, or you want me to, or?
Yeah, I'll just start with a comment. Residents and council have shared feedback around priority, one of which is related to specifically recycling and where our supposed recycling ends up. So that's one topic that is of concern. The second is related to the broader operation. We've heard everything from MIST to aggressive pickup procedures for which cans or lids can be broken. My recommendation was to pull together all the information and schedule a meeting with priority leadership to address head-on all of those items. And I see that is happening in March. That's my thought process on the next step, based on the feedback you've shared and the residents we've heard. Vince, anything to add?
I think, yeah, the mayor and I talked about it, that the two of us will meet with them and discuss, maybe Bill as well, related to the recycling aspect, but the broader issue with it. You know, the clerk had provided me a copy of the contract related to that. And one of the things that came out of it was that, well, their contract ends this August, so there's probably gonna have to be an RFP for service evaluation that goes along with that. But, you know, the representation of it is, I think, when you initially, the contract was in place, visited their recycling center that's no longer in operation. And so there's, you know, we'll report.
It was a different company.
Was that a different?
Yeah, it was a different company. It was GFL. And then when priority took over, they couldn't take it to GFL.
Okay.
But that's, I think, what caused the issue. So are we keeping this out here, or did they just take it away?
Oh, it's still out there. But I think it did may come, you know, well, depending on the outcome of our discussion, you know, the mayor and I have with them, we'll, we'll report back at the next meeting what, where we go from here.
Okay, so in the meantime, people are still recycling?
Well, they're putting it in a dumpster that's going to a landfill.
Yeah.
That part is what I think it's pretty obvious, so.
And let's, since we're having this discussion, let's just be very clear here. Councilwoman Wood, amongst other residents, brought to our attention that our recycling, that was supposed to be going to recycling, that we pay to go to recycling. Literally, truck was followed, and we found out that it was not going to recycling. It was going to a landfill. Obviously, you can imagine that's extremely upsetting for the city of Gibraltar and for all of its residents. We pay money, or the assumption that they're doing what we've been paid to have them contracted to do, and they were not doing that. So I've requested an immediate meeting with their management. I want to revisit the financials of money we have paid that may not have gone to where it should have. I apologize to the residents. I'm glad this is brought to our attention. Obviously, we made a commitment to address it immediately. So I want to be very blatantly clear, to me, that is wildly unacceptable, and we will have a discussion with their management to immediately address that amongst the broader topics. And just like our other professional services, we'll be taking a critical look at our support in that arena.
Wouldn't that void their contract with us?
We're gonna, we're gonna lean on the process to let that prevail, but you would assume that that would be in violation of the agreement. But that was something that we asked Vince to pull immediately to take a look at. So second, Councilwoman Wood brought that. We jumped on it, and the next step would be a meeting with our management. As to the recycling location, obviously, we want to act promptly here, but want to make sure that everybody's publicly aware that that's what we've been informed of today. Do you have any other feedback, Councilwoman Wood, on what you'd like to see, or any suggestions for us?
For the recycling?
Yeah, just any, any other information on that topic?
Well, it depends on, you know, if you're gonna go out for a different waste management company, if they are associated with a recycling center, that would be great. I mean, I don't want somebody to say, oh, yeah, we can recycle it. And next thing you know, they're in Riverview. So I just want to make sure. And I only know that GFL is the one that had the recycling center. And I don't know if you would want to go back with them. I don't know.
I think it's up to council to evaluate all these professional services, including that one. Obviously, I'm just quite upset about the findings, and so we're just trying to jump on that immediately and get all of it.
That's why I was thinking the waste management might be part of your matrix or whatever you're looking for, like trash. That's why I was thinking the waste management might be part of your matrix or whatever you're looking for, like trash pickup, that kind of thing. So that's all I have on recycling, but I have one more question.
Yeah, please.
Because I know you guys had the infrastructure committee meeting and I know Rick is on it and I think Rob is on it.
Yep.
So I was asking about lead lines and does the committee, when they meet, do they have a report that they are going to send us? Or do they, are going to, minutes or whatever? And I know I did talk to Vince on that. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're kept apprised of what's happening because like the sewer lines and stuff, it just kind of disappears and months later, we decide to talk about it. So, you know, I just want to keep everybody, you know, on top of what's happening with the committees.
100%.
So.
Yeah.
Their initial was just a kickoff meeting and, you know, I'm the designated note taker for action items. So I'll, you know, draft those up. There was a couple items, you know, one mostly with the scheduling and a little, most of general discussion about, you know, some of the challenges associated with working with, I shouldn't say working with, but, you know, monitoring the engineering work that goes along with some of the projects that are out there and so. But it's mostly just setting in place where we go from here with it. And it's given me an opportunity, I got some ideas how we might be more effective in, you know, starting to put together, which is essentially a capital improvements program. It's just, so, but I'll, I'll give you the action minutes, I'll have it on the next agenda since we met on Thursday, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, you know, because every time we come up with the committee, they meet and do something, but we never get the feedback on it, really, like a report or minutes or something that you would want to be able to tell everybody. So if you're going to continue infrastructure meetings, I think it should at least be maybe listed on the agenda under a committee or something or.
I like that.
Vince is going to talk about, whatever. However.
I think it's, I think it's a great suggestion. They kicked off last week, it was a kickoff meeting, and I completely agree, Councilwoman Wood. And I think what we'll do is we'll commit to Vince, he just committed to the next council meeting, he'll put an update on there. Vince was primary note taker and then Mr. Fonti was going to double check, so there's basically two people on point for meeting minutes.
Okay.
And we'll, I love the suggestion. I think we can include that in the next council meeting on March 12th. And we'll just make it a regular frequency of rolling those committee updates into the council discussion.
Okay. One last thing, and I promise, because I know it's 9 o'clock.
Yeah, please.
But I understand that there is some kind of, I don't know, problems within the fire department, police department, EMTs, whatever. And I didn't know if we were going to have a study session, talk about it, if that's something you guys are discussing and bringing in here. But I know there are some issues that people want to discuss, so I don't know how we want to do that.
Great question. The short story is everything that's done has a council member involved. In this case, one of the council members, Councilman Molner was a part of the dialogues. We want to make sure council is always a part of the internal discussions.
Okay.
Simply put, there were data observations as well as one-on-ones with personnel in the departments that allowed us to identify opportunities for process improvement or data questions. We sat down with our Director of Public Safety, who's Chief Tangway. We sat down with Chief Kane. We sat down with other members of Chief Kane's department. And we sat down with council and myself and Vince as a initial discussion around the observations. So I hear you loud and clear, out of respect for the departments, we'll brief council on the discussion as it prevails. But it was really just an information gathering of, here's what we're observing, what's the perspective? And then the subsequent steps, I'll defer to Chief Tangway and the department head for any updates they want to give to council. But rest assured that council's been a part of that dialogue.
Okay, so there's no study session or anything like that set up or talked about or anything?
Not this time, but the council would have the ability to motion. So if you wanted to make a motion, we could absolutely consider a study session. I just think, I just want to give you the update on where we're at right now, today.
Okay. Do you think it's in our best interest to have a study session? I mean, I can ask for one.
I think.
Really, one member, one member of council should not have a lot more information than the rest.
It needs to be, we were all in the group, so we all need to be in sync. So I've heard two more things here today.
I think, I think it's a great suggestion. I think if council, so I think, right now, again, it's the observation phase, so it's a perfect time to have this dialogue. If council wanted a motion for a study session, we could absolutely do that. I think I would actually raise the broader discussion, because Councilwoman Cosmo brought it up earlier, that with the plethora of work that we have as a new administration, I mean, I'm amazed at it each and every day. I think the more time, the merrier. I know people joke of like, wow, our council meetings are long and they're frequent and we have a lot of, there's so much to do that we could never have enough time. So if you want to make a study session motion for which that was a part of the discussion, there's a multitude of other topics we could cover. I would suggest we include the resident survey in that study session as well, because I think I want to get that on March. So if that's going to be a fruitful addition to a study session, then absolutely. So you have my full support. I want to respect our department heads and our Department of Public Safety lead. So if they have any suggestions here, please, please comment, but.
I just want to make sure, if we're having a study session, this is the right time to be doing it. I mean, I know you're saying it's at the beginning phases. Do you want to wait until you get a little farther in or? I'm not involved in that, so I don't know what you talked about, so I'm just bringing it up.
I wanted to, the head of department, it's a great suggestion, Department of Public Safety lead.
So we're currently waiting on some responses from like Cindy. She's working on some things with Bill to put together some operational guidance and plans. Like a wage scale structure, something we could bring to city council annually and say, this is how the fire department's paid. This is what everything's spread out. So we're kind of just waiting for, and Cindy's got like probably three or four things done already and still reviewing them. So I think it's better just to see what she can come up with.
Okay.
And then we may not need a study session. We may be able to stand right here in front of you and tell you what we've done and what we're going to move forward with. The goal would be to annually, and this is like data-driven, to be able to come here annually before budget time and say, this is how we'd like to pay the fire department. You know, there's been a promotion made recently, a couple, and we don't really have any extra considerations for those. So I've kind of put out there like, hey, let's research what other cities do and let's see what we can bring here and, you know, yearly put in contracts or, you know, not really a contract, but a wage deal so we know what defines how they're paid, what we expect of them. And for example, we're a paid-on-call where some cities are paid per hour. And, you know, there's, you know, if we, you know, can consider all those things. And, you know, I think Amy can tell you the budget is a little bit higher than normal right now. And so we're just, you know, is that because of call-driven or other things? So we're just trying to gather fats and give them a chance to come up with, I think, and I think between Bill and Cindy, I think we'll come up with something really good that'll benefit the residents of Gibraltar and be laid out. And I think it'll be, at the end of the day, it should have been something done yearly. And I think because we were fixing a problem before Bill, that we didn't, we just kind of didn't do anything. So now I think, the more guidance we have, and Bill's already, I mean, they've taken a big step in getting Letsy pulled in there and getting some policies. And a lot of times, you know, and I don't want to say like I'm ripping on the fire departments, but a lot of them don't have a lot of policies and procedures and things that are driven towards how things should operate, what, what certain positions mean. And I think if I asked Bill, what's your sergeant position was, he could lay it out, what they do. But there's probably not a whole lot of guidance on what that position does. And just try to clean some stuff up.
I love that commentary. And Councilwoman Wood, I think by the March 12th meeting, our next council meeting, perhaps we can have an update there. Perhaps that also might include the professional services grade matrix that we talked about, inclusive of priority and updates there. It'll have the infrastructure committee information.
Okay.
And then maybe that would be a good informed time to say, hey, we want a study session to talk about X, Y, and Z. Because I would love to have a more detailed dive on the resident survey activity and I think that's a March activity for us. So I like that suggestion.
So we'll wait till the next council meeting and see what?
I think so. Let's see what information the departments can provide and updates on all those topics. And then that way it's more informed on what the study session would entail, if that sounds something.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up. People ask questions and, you know, I have questions and so there you have it.
I love it.
In the meantime, you know, between the, my office is always open, I'm here. Vince beat me here one day this week, but I'm usually here pretty early.
He got you?
Vince got me early. I couldn't believe it, he's got a longer drive than me, but I'm here. If you want to come in and talk to me like you do with the city administrator, come on in, I'll just tell you.
Oh, yeah, I've already covered him a few days.
Yes.
Yeah, just, if it works, just let me know ahead of time, we'll schedule some time.
Okay.
And then Councilwoman Wood, because you brought it up, the lead lines project. There's a large passion to get a project plan, a very clear project plan and timeline. We had a meeting about the lead line topic and we have a meeting with Eagle tomorrow to answer some questions about the funding. So we can include a more detailed update on our next council meeting for the 12th. But simply put, the questions we have are, does the funding cover the inspection of the remaining lines? Because we have to identify throughout the city of Gibraltar where those lines exist. And there's a certain percentile as a city, based on the number of units or homes you have in your city, the percentile you have to hit to showcase that you've thoroughly inspected where the lead lines exist. So that's one component. And our question for Eagle tomorrow is to better understand where the funding allocates or doesn't allocate for that inspection. Because you either outsource it and pay significantly for that, or you find a way to internally within the city inspect. And our DPW's already inspected, I think, in the order of 120-plus or identified, you know, those areas. So that's one piece. And the second question we have is just on the timeline and the path in front of us. We are informed that end of year, by end of year, '24, we're shooting for the inspection to be completed so that you've identified all the lead lines you have. And then there's a percentile of removals and replacements you have to do each year thereafter for the 400K that we've.
So it's till the end of the year, because I understood September. So we have till the end of the year.
I've been, I was initially told October, based on the paperwork, which we're actively reviewing. We'll update on council, the January, there's a January 1st of 2025 call out on that paperwork, but that'll be one thing we're going to confirm with Eagle tomorrow.
Okay, but I think DPW's already working on that.
Yeah, so they've gotten, they've gotten some, so already a lot of inspections done. They've printed out a grid that with data points and where those inspections are taking place. There's still more to be done and we want to make sure we're not behind in that timeline. So we'll, we'll give council a robust update on that for the 12th as well. And if we want a study session or include that in that, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think they pick, you know, take care of all those loose ends and kind of figure out where we're going with it.
I think it's a great, great suggestion. Council, any other thoughts on, Councilwoman Woods? I know, Councilwoman Cosmo, you were supportive of that broader discussion. Any other council comments? Valentine, you had your hand up.
Well, my, my priority is the lead line replacement, so I was going to ask about that, but you've already addressed it.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll include more details coming out of the call with Eagle tomorrow. We can easily just send an email update, that's easier for the interim. But March 12th will be a lot of data included in this healthy packet you keep getting.
Uh-oh. Okay.
Sorry?
It's March 11th.
Oh, sorry, March 11th. Thank you for the question, Amy. Great, any other council comments, questions, concerns? Okay, great. That would then close our new business. There are no table and refer items this evening, so I'd like to move it out to public comment. Public, thanks for hanging in there with us today. And we'd like to open up the podium. Please state your name and address as you approach the podium.
Dennis Vosmer, 29775 Point Drive. Very brief, I appreciate the mayor came, come out to the community event that our congressmen put together at the Westfield Center last week. It was a two-hour meeting, a lot of EPA, Eagle issues, Riverview, their council was there, their mayor was there, Rose Hill, Wind Dot was there. A lot of questions were answered by Eagle. They didn't have it, they were contacting the person in the audience, they were getting the answers out. Really informative, was glad to be part of that. And there was a video that they did the following day with DTE concerning the implosion that's coming up, that's now been postponed. Thanks for the update on that. I work like, I don't know, half mile from there, so I'm a little interested in when that's going to happen. So there's a video they put together, it was a live event through Microsoft Teams last week. And I contacted the community liaison, they said it would be up there that day. I just checked, it got put up like two days ago.
Yep.
I sent you, I emailed you tonight.
Got the link, yeah.
So if you want to put it on Facebook, that's your discretion or your website there. But there's like a 22-minute video that the public was engaged with DTE about that and maybe other topics. I don't know if other topics were covered, but anyway, just wanted to bring that to the attention of the residents and you all.
Really appreciate that. And I'll make sure that that link reaches all council's inbox.
Thanks. She had the EPA, main EPA fellow, and she was tasking him. He wasn't answering the questions, she thought, forthrightly, so it was kind of interesting to see her. She was proud of him. She's like, that's not what they ask you, they need to answer this question. So she knew people were upset in the audience and she redirected some of the questioning. And then they had, the Eagle director is like seven months on the job, so he was there too. So it was a, it was a good event. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Dennis, appreciate it.
Wayne Brennan, 30490, South Gibraltar. For Shuva, are we still at 13%? Is that?
Today's reading was 9.95.
I understand that, but I said, are we contracted in at 13%? Was that what it was? I know for a long time we were at 13% and I know we've brought it down a long ways, but I mean, are we budgeted for 13% usage?
I don't want to misspeak, Amy. Do you have that date on hand? And if not, we can follow up with Wayne.
I think that's correct. That sounds about right, but I don't, I don't have my laptop, so I do not.
But I mean, well, I'm just saying, for every percentage point.
I think that's what.
I thought it was like $60,000, wasn't it? For every percentage point we're under 13 that we get refunded for, we don't have to pay in?
That I'm not sure on. The 13% is ringing true to me on the.
Right, that's our, that was our part of it, we.
Because we get 13% of all the bonds.
On the bonds, yeah. Sorry, please, go on.
I just wondered, just the savings we're getting, I mean, amounts or something. I know we increased the rates for everybody around town and stuff for the water lines and stuff and maybe we might get some money back, just for wondering for the people.
It's a great, it's a great thought and something that's on our minds as we're dissecting all this. And I think the good news is Mother Nature and the infrastructure improvements hopefully are turning the right direction to that percent of system use. And Amy and I and many others are dissecting all of that equation as we speak.
And I don't know who goes through the sidewalks, but were the construction along South Gibraltar, where they replaced the water lines?
Yep.
I mean, a lot of places, I think I counted 17 total, flags of sidewalks that are cracked, where their heavy equipment was put, where they drove over, the sidewalks are cracked. It might not be tomorrow you got to replace them, but before that contractor leaves town, you should look into having those replaced, because it's what, $325 to $350 per flag to replace them?
That's a great call. Bill, Vince, are you aware of that?
Aware of it, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Aware and.
A little savings for the city, not much, but.
No, Wayne, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
They will be coming back in the spring to finish up the rest of the concrete repairs because there's some residential concrete repairs they have to do as well.
Good news is, it sounds like they're coming back in the spring to finish up those concrete repairs.
I don't know whether they're coming back or, you know, because they did quite a few already.
And that, I think what we strive to do, at least for some of those projects, is put up the Facebook notice and/or like let the residents in the impacted area know, so we'll take note of that. And as we approach the timeline for them to come back and do that work, we'll make sure people are notified. Thank you, Wayne. Any other public comments this evening? Nada? Well, thank you all so much for staying engaged and thorough meeting. Thanks to council and department heads. Amy, thank you for covering for Katie.
No problem.
And at this time, that'll close public comment and I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Cosmo, initial motion by Cox. And Amy, if you could call roll?
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmo?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molner?
Does this have to be unanimous?
Yes.
Shumey?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.